All right. Good morning, everyone. We've got a full house here. Yeah, it's good to see a bunch of people back in council chambers and hopefully we'll get some work done here today. So, yeah, it's been a while since we've had such a gathering, and a while since I've been back in the office. So I was away at a camp down in southern Alberta at a boys' leadership camp for eight days, taking a beating from these boys from age eight to seventeen. So if you see me squirming in my seat, it's because I'm nursing some bruises on my back. And so with that, we've got a beautiful day out there. Let's get the job done and get outside. So we'll call the meeting to order at 9:31. We have before you the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions there? Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Yes, two additions from administration. 7.1.2, the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority Fire Apparatus Units Purchase Request, and 7.5.3, the Munich Core Golf Tournament Scheduled for August the 16th.
That was 7.5.3 on that one?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
I'm not sure if we missed the Bonneville Golf Tournament. I'm not sure if we've got anything, Mr. CEO, for that one.
Okay, we'll put it in there as 7.5.4. I guess in the meantime, if we can find the details on that one, because that one's coming up right away.
Twenty-first, I think of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. With those additions, anything else? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve.
Okay, Councilor Jubenville makes the motion. We can call the vote. Adoption of minutes for the regular meeting of council for July 28, 2021. Are there any errors or omissions?
Mr. Reeve saying none. I'll recommend that we approve those minutes.
Okay, Councilor Swiger makes the motion. We can call the votes. That is carried. Thank you. We have no public hearings today. We do have a delegation at 10 o'clock from Community Futures Lakeland. Any business arising for minutes? Seeing none in the new business, environmental and protective services. Good morning, Mr. Yans. Looking forward to talking about shotguns.
As we all do. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, council. So this RFD is coming back from the July 14 meeting. It was tabled at that meeting, so we could discuss it further at this meeting. So in the 2020-2023 STRAP Plan, the MD Bonneville Council asked to lobby the government of Alberta for increased authorities to the MD Peace Officers. The shotgun authority was researched because of the need to dispatch injured wildlife in a timely manner with RCMP and Fish Wildlife Officers with their busy schedules. They're often unable to attend immediately. Shotguns would not be the means to protecting peace officers or members of the public of criminal behavior, but would just be used for the wildlife. So with further investigation in having shotguns with the Peace Officer Department, there is a amount of risk associated with accidental discharge or having negative feedback from dispatching wildlife in the public currently. So administration is recommending not to pursue this enhanced shotgun authority. Just to discuss a little bit of the benefits and disadvantages of having the shotguns. So if, on the benefit side, if the MD Peace Officers were to gain authority to use the shotguns, it would free up time of the RCMP officers. The RCMP in our area are called out on estimated 30 to 50 times a year to dispatch animals. This was investigated per year, and animals because of vehicle strikes. If the MD Peace Officers were to gain authority to use the shotguns, there would be a quicker response with less suffering of the animals and free up time of the RCMP. On the disadvantages side, there is a risk, however, firearms are deployed, that something could go wrong. Although very infrequent firearms do malfunction, it would pose a threat to the MD Peace Officers or anybody nearby. Also, in today's social media society, anything can be scrutinized in a negative way, and we could see that be a potential issue. There is a significant amount of training that the officers will have to go through in order to obtain the credentials to use the firearms, also with annual qualifications that would have to be realized by those officers authorized to utilize the shotguns on shift. So at this point, administration does not think the risk is worth the reward with having the enhanced authority. The RCMP roughly have in the area about 50 officers with multiple Fish and Wildlife Officers available to dispatch wildlife if they do get hit by vehicles. So if council were to go ahead, financially, we're estimating around that $20,000 to do the training and to get equipment, and then there would have to be annual training after that, or qualifications after that.
Okay. Questions from council? Councilor Jubenville?
I have a question, Mr. Reeve. So I thought that we did have shotguns already?
Yes, we do currently have a couple shotguns at our place. They haven't been used probably over 10 years. At that time, the peace officers didn't gain authority probably after 2010, and yes, since then, we just have the equipment in lockers and storage, so.
So have the regulations changed since 2010, or?
No, so to my understanding is you have to gain authority every so often, and at that time, they chose not to go after the authority for use of shotguns. So prior to that, they were used to dispatch wildlife.
Councilor Fadav?
Mr. Yans, thanks for the additional information brought out. In the 30 to 50 times per year that they're dispatched, have they, I guess, expressed any concerns of time delay from the RCMP at all, or has that been any issue, or kind of information did they give you?
Yeah, so through the reef to Councilor Fadav. Yeah, so when our Director of Public Safety did contact the local RCMP detachments, they do say that there is a delay on attending the scenes. You know, obviously, it's not a priority to go dispatch an animal, but they will do it when they can. So most times, the animal does usually die from the animals or the vehicle strike and just probably not in a timely manner. It might take a half an hour for the animal to go down. But they do get the calls quite a bit, but yeah, it's just unfortunate sometimes of the response.
Yeah, so he had additional, it says RCMP have roughly 50 officers, including multiple wildlife.
Yeah.
So 50, that's just on the RCMP side, not including Fish and Wildlife?
That's correct. So, yeah, between the two detachments, there is roughly about 50 officers between the two detachments. And depending on the day, on the Fish and Wildlife side, there's anywhere from three to five Fish and Wildlife Officers within our region.
Three to, yeah, three to five.
Yeah.
Councilor Jubenville?
So, Mr. Yans, wouldn't it be an option to use people that are qualified within the wards, like, I mean, we've got hunters that are fully qualified to use, they have their PAL, they have definitely a lot of experience, so.
Yep.
No different than our fire, people giving fire permits, you know? Just wondering, in the case of emergencies, if we did have a list of people that are, would be willing?
I think with the authority, I don't think the province would approve of that. Because they are wildlife, they are under regulations, who's to say that they kill an animal that's maybe not injured? There's, it would open up the, yeah, I don't think Fish and Wildlife would want that. People to go dispatching, I know through our pest control program, our officers out there quite a bit, and they've been asked to dispatch animals by Fish and Wildlife Officers, but I would never want them to do it without the approval first from the authorities to do so, because there's the regulations out there that you don't want, don't want to get in trouble for dispatching.
So just further that, so our officers, are they qualified to determine if that animal should be put down or not, or do you have to go to, do you have to have a Fish and Wildlife Officer?
No, so, for the officers to be qualified, they would have to gain authority through the Solicitor General, and right now, currently, they do not. So they wouldn't be able to dispatch an animal for Fish and Wildlife or any other resident. I wouldn't promote them to do so either. They could get in trouble.
Okay. Councilor Duchesne?
Yeah, one of the first regulations with firearms is no shooting within 200 meters of a road race, so we'd be creating trouble right away.
Yeah, you're breaking a few rules already.
Yeah. Okay. Councilor Jubenville?
Well, I will make a motion that we go with their recommendation, is that we just leave it as is. Let, yeah, the RCMP's can be called, and I don't think that we need to go through that whole process of trying, yeah, to get shotguns. So that's the motion that I'm making.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on the motion, and that's to go with the recommended action, which is not to seek enhanced authority. Councilor Fadav?
Yeah, thanks, Matt, again. You know, thank you very much for the additional information with 55 officers out there, and you're looking at 30 to 50 per year. I think they should be able to handle it. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, we can call the vote then. And that is to not seek enhanced authority for the MB of Bonneville Peace Officers from the Solicitor General relating to the use of shotguns at this time. That is carried. Thank you. Okay, next item.
Okay, next is BRFA Fire Apparatus Units Purchase Request. So just a little history on this. In July 2020, the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority Administration submitted a request to the MD of Bonneville to replace and purchase the two fire apparatus units in the fall of 2021. The estimated cost of these two units was $1,164,350. So at that time, the two fire apparatus units tender purchase price was canceled in the August of 2020 following a motion passed by the MD Council to first complete an age analysis of the fire apparatus equipment, Resolution Number 20.5, or 405. So just to give a little bit more information on that, in February of 2021, after the submission and review of the age life analysis report by Bayer on the MD Bonfire Apparatus Replacement Program, the MD Council decided not to continue replacing the fire apparatus at the recommended 15-year time period, but did direct administration through resolution to proceed with the tender purchase of the two fire apparatus, Resolution Number 21.118. So the BFRA has just received back the price for the two apparatus that was approved back in February of 2021, and that the price on those two units now are $1,326,317.
Councilor Duchesne?
First off, was that special order apparatus, spec ordered?
Yes, that was a spec order from the BFRA did supply suppliers with the spec orders, and these are the prices that were received. This is the lowest price that was received back from the specs.
But that was for special order to our specifications, or?
Yes.
BRFA specifications? Was there any pricing done on stock equipment available to us?
No, we did not, we were, did, administration did go back and research the specs from previous purchases to what we have the specs on for these two fire apparatuses. They are similar. We did not compare them to what's on the lots within these dealerships at this time, though.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Mr. Reeve?
Deputy Reeve?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. The majority of this was approved. What was not approved was the over-budget amount of $147,073. Is that correct?
No, we're going to have to correct that one, and I'm going to call on the CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I think it's important for council to understand that we don't have anything to do with the procurement of fire equipment other than providing the budget for it. Mr. Yans went out and did the little extra legwork on this, so we have not gone out and looked to see if there was stock equipment. That's been, that's been something BFRA. The motion that was made, and it's my understanding, I wasn't here, but the motion that was made in February was to approve the purchase, but we did not allocate a budget amount to it at that time. Hence, the recommended action, the council approves the unbudgeted expenditure of 1.3 million and change to be funded from the Equipment Capital Reserve. So originally, when this came up, that's what I thought we were doing as well, was funding the overage from the tender, but in actual fact, for two reasons. Number one, council did not make a motion approving the amount or where we're supplying it from, and secondly, council's procurement policy is that the purchase of heavy equipment and fleet vehicles is left to council as, when these tenders come in. So that's what's in front of you today, is the original amount of the 1.1 million and change, with the $147,000 and change added, to come to $1,326,317.
But, Mr. Reeve, wasn't the 1.179 million in the BRFA budget?
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah, they've already gone through that. The apparatus have been sourced separately outside of the BFRA budget.
Oh, I thought it was in the budget. All right, boy, I don't know what's going on here.
So apparatus have come to the MD as a separate ask on replacements?
But it wasn't in the BFRA budget. You're sure?
That's what we've been told by administration.
I can't believe that.
We would have seen that significant increase in their budget if it was.
No, if it was, we'd only see the increase of $147,000, the over the budget amount.
Councilor Fadav?
Councilor Kurviak, I think it was in our budget, in the MD budget, two years ago, or last year, not in the BFRA budget, but that amount was there, so that's probably what you're.
So it was approved two years ago, you're saying?
It was in our capital budget.
So it was in the Capital Replacement Reserve? It was in that budget?
Correct.
So all we're really asking for is the over amount of $147,000 then?
Let's get confirmation from.
Something's not right here.
Good morning, council. When we started the budget deliberation, the fire apparatus was put in the budget, and then council had asked administration to do a review at that time, and it was removed from the 2021 budget, but the amount was left in the reserve. There was $501,000 in the Equipment Replacement Reserve for each of those apparatus. We've been saving towards it since 2007, but it stayed in the reserve. During the budget deliberation, Council Fadav did ask where it was, since we weren't purchasing those apparatus at that time, and I had responded that it was sitting in the reserve, but it was not included in the budget that was approved. We were awaiting the results of the review that was being carried out at that time. Later on in the year, after the review was completed, and council made the motion to go ahead with the purchase, the motion wasn't to change the budget at that time. It was approving BRFA to go and source those apparatus and to purchase them. Now that we have the exact numbers, we are asking for it to become a part of our budget. We would make a budget amendment, but it's still getting funded from the Equipment Replacement Reserves.
Okay.
So, Mr. Reeve, is there money in the Equipment Reserve Fund for this? There is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the amount that isn't there is just $147,000?
The amount in the reserve is just based on the purchase from so many years ago, so we have over a million in the reserve.
Yes, okay.
But our entire Equipment Replacement Program is used as a pool for the MD as a whole. We don't say, we don't use the exact amount saved for one piece to purchase another piece, so there's sufficient funds in the pool to purchase these apparatus.
Councilor Fadav?
So the difference really is, it's $161,000, because you had 1.64, now the ask is 1,326, correct?
That is correct, except that even the 1.1 that's in the reserve needs approval from council to be spent and was never a part of our budget. It's just sitting in it. So the full amount that's needed for council to approve is the 1.3 million, so that it now becomes a part of an expenditure that's approved as part of the 2021 budget.
But the difference from last, from August 2020 to now, the difference is 161?
It's about 147,000.
147, I believe.
Yeah, about 147,000.
147?
147 and $73. And another thing, Mr. Reeve, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so 1326, 317, minus 1,164, sorry, 1,640 is 161, but maybe I'm wrong.
I had 11.
My math is wrong.
I had 1179.
Did you?
We're talking millions here, $3.
So another thing, Mr. Reeve, is that I was speaking with Mr. Haney at the Chili Cook Off, and he said that after August 15, the price will go up again, so, yeah, another five, I'm not sure what he said, 5% to 7%? So I think we should approve the, I'll make a motion, Mr. Reeve, to approve Option 1 and see where it goes.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Councilor Skarsen?
Yeah, so I guess I'm just curious, Matt, did you say that, so the, what's the difference, I guess, between the spec units that we're asking for and any stock? Like, what is it that we're asking that's so special?
Administration didn't get down to that, Councilor Skarsen, to what the difference would be for stock, fire trucks, to what we are. The request, I know, are two pumper trucks for fire trucks, one being a rural pumper truck, and the second one being an industrial pumper truck. To my knowledge, the difference between the two trucks are larger motor size and a little bit more capacity for putting out, for water. But, yeah, we, administration didn't have time to go, because this has just happened the last couple of weeks, administration hasn't had time to go talk to the fire truck dealerships to see what they have on lots for specs for, just what they have to what we special order, so.
Councilor Swiger and then Mr. CEO.
Yeah, just make kind of a comment about spec vehicles. In my experience, I've been on the Ardmore Department 40 years, and when they spec a vehicle, like, they need like two years' lead time, and so they get all these specs in, there's nothing on a lot that they can just purchase, so, I mean, I'd like to, if you're really interested, Councilor Skarsen, I'd like to have, Councilor Skarsen?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're interested in knowing the lead time, it'd be nice to have the guys who actually purchase these, because I've sat in meetings going over specs for fire trucks, and you just don't buy them off the shelf. So I'd love to have somebody from the Fire Authority who's purchasing these give us that lead time.
400 days.
So in other words, you don't just buy, they're not on a lot.
For a spec unit is 400 days. Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Just a couple of points. Number one, this is one of the only purchases I'm aware of, or systems that I'm aware of in the MD of Bonneville, that our procurement department doesn't procure the vehicles. We did not do any extra legwork on this because the procurement of the fire trucks is left to the fire department. We only are the funder of the equipment. There is certainly room for some discussions in the future whether or not the fire department should provide us with a spec, and then we take care of the procurement of the unit at that point in time. I'm not sure if there would be a cost saving, a time saving, but we actually have very little to do with the procurement of these units, other than bringing them to council and having council approve the budget. To the second question, and I would respectfully disagree with Councilor Swiger, there are on-the-lot vehicles that can be purchased that are stock units. I think through COVID, they may be hard to find right now, but I do know in the past, Rocky Mountain Phoenix, Fort Gary Industries, who I believe this tender is through, do have stock units. Councilors who've been through the RMA Trade Show in the past would have seen some of the stock units that are provided there. If there are special things that a municipality wants on a spec unit, that's a different story, and Councilor Swiger is absolutely correct. Spec units have to be ordered, and there is a 400-day-plus lead time on any of those, any of those special things. So in this case, again, we have nothing to do with the procurement of these two trucks. They are, we are the funder and the funder only, so we didn't do any other research on the trucks at all. We, and again, I would suggest that through COVID and with supply chain issues, that Councilor Swiger is actually correct, in this instance, that there probably isn't much on lots today. We're having trouble getting a pickup truck, let alone getting a fire truck. But when times are good, there were, there were stock units that were available for purchase. Whether they work for a particular fire department is a separate question.
So on this one, you know, we've been back and forth on it for months, and, you know, I see it as an unacceptable delay brought on by a failure in the governance that we have, in the structure that we have, that we spend a month with a decision at BFRA, it comes back here, we spend another month for it to go back, and it goes on and on and on. I think we have to ensure that we have these trucks in line so that we see them in our budget every time, and somehow streamline the process of procurement, because right now, it is very cumbersome. And because of the added costs that we're seeing, you know, we're taking an extra big chunk out of our equipment reserve, that's going to cut into other equipment that the MB needs to purchase. And eventually, you know, we're going to have to, we know it's coming, the cuts to our revenue, we're going to have to pull in the reins and just watch where we spend on everything. So, yeah. Councilor Skarsen?
Yeah, I don't argue that point. I mean, you can look at it, we did get an extra year out of those trucks, you know, over it all, so, I mean, I just have a bit of an issue, you know, not being able to scrutinize these trucks a bit when we're spending this much money on it, right? And to say that someone comes to us and say, listen, we need this truck, approve it and go, and it's like, well, what are my options here, right? I mean, this is a pretty significant amount of money, and to say, yeah, no, if they say so, it works for me, right? And that's my only issue. I, you know, if they need the trucks, we've got to approve the trucks. I don't want to have to pay another 5%. I mean, it's crazy that it went up this much in that short amount of time as it is anyways, but for me to believe that you can't find a truck, I mean, people buy our junk, right? And we can't find a?
Junk?
Yeah, whatever you want to call it. It's not junk, I guess. People buy our used stuff. For us to not be able to go and find a new truck on the lot somewhere, it kind of blows my mind a bit, you know? So that's just where I'm at. It's a lot of money to just say yes to.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Deputy Reeve?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. The reason the price increases is because it wasn't approved before, like, a year plus ago. If it was approved then, there would be no price increase in this. And of course, if there's changes have to be made, we'll wait till October, November, and we'll discuss more of these options, but that's my comments.
Anything else? Councilor Jubenville?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, say, it is a lot of money when you look at just a couple of units, but I know that we have basically budgeted for it. It is in the reserve, and we have to count on our professionals that are in the business to tell us what they need, and, yeah, and like Councilor Skarsen says, yeah, it'd be nice to maybe have those options reviewed, maybe what else is out there, but at this point in time, given what we're dealing with, I'm in favor that we move forward with this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I think one of the struggles council may be having with this, obviously, it's a large number, but I hear in not so many words from Councilor Skarsen, are these the trucks we need? And I can't answer that question because council hasn't sat down and created, we don't have a fire service standard by which we have clearly indicated what it is the council and our residents expect from our fire service. The fire service may be providing exactly what our residents or what council The fire service may be providing exactly what our residents or what council wants, but we don't have a standard by which to judge the equipment we're purchasing or the services being provided. And I think that's something long term for council to consider is, is sitting down through probably some strategic planning to craft that service standard. We have service standards on everything else. We have a road program that a road is so wide and it's got so much asphalt or so much pavement on it, but we haven't done that with the fire. And so when we purchase a piece of equipment, I, and I hear it, that is it the right truck? We don't know because we don't have an objective standard to compare to that this is what council wants a particular piece of equipment to do, you know, are, how are we providing that service? Are, are we, you know, are we expecting a, you know, a ten-minute response time ninety-seven percent of the time? Is that the right truck to complete that? Is it the right rescue unit to complete that? And I think, I think it will be who this council moving into the future to have those discussions as to what is the standard that's required and pass that standard on to the fire service, that this is what we expect. And then from there, we'll flow a better, a better, a better handle on what type of equipment is that we need to do, whatever it is that council believes that standard should be.
So, yeah, on that, you know, there is a, a governance review which is happening at B R F A. That won't be complete until late in the fall, probably. Probably after that point in time, the, the new council that's in place would have to sit down and look at those, those service levels and, and try and find a way to streamline this, because right now it's, it's getting a little old. So at this point in time, I would say we could go ahead, recognizing the fact that these units are under the, the twenty-year that council actually was looking at moving equipment replacement to, and so they'll be replaced at probably sixteen years now and probably still in excellent condition, so. Okay, with that, anything else? We'll call the vote.
As we weighed out, I could just ask, the, the plan is to sell the two that we're replacing? Maybe Glendon needs a new truck?
That is carried. Thank you.
That fire truck that Counselor Skarzen was referring to does not go out to the M D because it won't make it back. It stays in Glendon Village in case our equipment goes out to fight a fire out in the M D. I have one more question for Mr. Yance, Mr. Reeve? I'm just wondering what's happening with the STANTEC report? It's been a long time and did you receive that report?
Yes, we've received the report. At this time, we were directed not to proceed with anything until further by council, so.
Till when?
Given direction by council. So we, we do have the two reports that were, were given to the M D. I think the last one was end of May, start of June, and right now, there was no, no direction to me to proceed.
No, that's, that's the old report.
That's the old report?
Yes. We're still waiting on the engineering for the new, for the changes to the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we're waiting for the changes?
Yes.
And when are they going to be in the, we have no idea?
We're talking STANTEC.
They're standing tall, I heard last time. Really?
That was going to be done with, with, with administration from B R F A. We're talking to STANTEC about doing all the, the changes that they wanted to. Remember, they're going to get the whole thing, then they're going to walk it back, depending on, on, on budget costs.
But had everything was done already?
No, the first.
The, the first level, our report was a, was high level. It didn't, it didn't get into details and it wasn't accurate costing. So the next one that was recorded and, and there was, there was some more detail that was put into that. So that engineering document will be a more reasonable value on the, the changes.
Well, it's sure waiting a long time for that building. That's not very good. Thank you.
Okay, we are at ten o'clock. We have a delegation.
Yes, Mr. Reeve, I'd like to present Lisa Ford, General Manager, and Ray Assali, Assali, Business Analyst with Community Futures Lakeland, who are here to present a request for funding to support their proposed beautification program for businesses in the M D of Bonneville.
Thank you, Esther.
Mr. Reeve, I have one last question for Mr. Yance, is that okay?
We'll do it after.
Okay, okay, sure.
Good morning, your honors. Reeve Satchuk, members of council. It's so good to see people this morning. I'm happy to be here with you today to talk about our favorite topic, which of course is Community Futures Lakeland and one of the new amazing programs that we're working on that we feel will be a good fit for the businesses in our region. My name, of course, is Lisa Ford. I'm the General Manager for Community Futures, and I'd like to introduce you to my new Business Analyst, Ray Assali. She's going to walk you through this new program and she's going to highlight some of the reasons why we feel this program will be a good fit for some of the businesses in the M D.
So as Lisa said, we're here today to discuss the opportunity that Community Futures Lakeland feels will benefit the region, business beautification loans. Is it the arrow that I touch or the center button? Center?
He's just cute, don't you know? I'll steer for you.
Okay, so next. Thank you. These are small loans that include a repayable portion as well as a two thousand dollar grant. At Community Futures Lakeland, we know that this is an uncertain time for local businesses to decide to invest and we feel, we feel that an interest-free loan coupled with a grant would help business owners make the choice to invest. We are trying to see the opportunities, even though the COVID-nineteen pandemic has created unimaginable challenges for our community. From an individual business perspective, our businesses have less foot traffic and makes the ideal time to complete construction projects. From a construction industry perspective, our businesses are not at capacity. They may be available to take on smaller projects that in previous times they would have passed on. And finally, from a community perspective, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has kept people closer to home and their communities, their areas, their neighborhoods are their focus. I have provided in the handout the guidelines as well as the application for this loan, so you have some additional information. We would, of course, include all restrictions and guidelines that the municipality has for business development. This is a breakdown of costs to a municipality. Community Futures Lakeland will provide all the marketing for the program and loan administration over the lifespan of the loan, which is thirty-six months. We will market it through our networks using Constant Contact, Instagram, Facebook, business engagement site visits, and we'll also mention the program in all our virtual training. We will also rely, of course, on the municipalities and local chambers to, to help promote the program. So the cost would be to Community Futures through our investment portfolio, forty thousand dollars. This would be to do five loans in your municipality. The grant, five grants from the municipality, ten thousand dollars, and the administration fee to the municipality, which is six percent over thirty-six months, is three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. So the cost to participate in this program, doing five loans, allowing five businesses to participate, would be thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. I wanted to share an example of how this program is working in other communities in Alberta. Tabor, which has run the program with Chinook Community Futures for about five years, has seen significant success. As of twenty nineteen, they had completed forty-three loans and after speaking to them about twenty twenty, they were also fully subscribed. You can see that the total cost to the town of Tabor in that final, the total cost of the town of Tabor was a hundred and nineteen thousand and change, but the last line is the, the payoff line. It's the investment that was made by the business community over the course of those years. It was two point five million. So you can see in the community of Tabor that these loans have often been a catalyst for spending on business improvements and Ta, and in Tabor, we can see it had an exponential effect. And the result is much bigger spending at the local level. So now, I can go on to the next slide. You can just see some of the pictures of what happened in Tabor. You can just run through these. Okay. Lisa and I also took the opportunity to review the most recent Bonneville Regional Economic Development Plan, and you had identified a Buy Bonneville initiative to help support small business. We also reviewed your strategic plan from twenty twenty where you highlighted the need to develop a process for attracting development to the region. And although this program is not a complete solution, it is a good starting place because it encourages local businesses to invest in their property's appearance, which means our region is more appealing to that non-local business or individual who is looking for somewhere to invest. We at Community Futures Lakeland, we want to be bold in supporting our local economy and we do feel that this program could help the municipalities reach their vision and of course, meet our own mandate to assist rural communities to plan and restructure and meet the demands of a changing economy. I also wanted to highlight that although a lot of these are, as you can see, small urban downtowns and you are a rural municipality, not a town, you do have several small urbans within, within your M D. And I also feel that as we look at, you know, this weekend coming up, open farm days, looking at the, you know, the farm-to-fork movement, signage, yeah, and agritourism, signage is really important, especially for non-local residents when they come into our region. So a ten thousand dollar loan can get a new sign on a rural business. It's not big money, but it can, it can help in those other areas where we want to grow our economy and agritourism is, is one of them. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, you bet. Counselor Shane.
Yes, in your statements, in your overview, any business within the defined, defined boundaries of the M D of Bonneville, so defined in our boundaries is the city of Coal Lake and the town of Bonneville and so, are those eligible?
I would consider their own boundaries to kind of be cutouts.
So just, just within the M D?
Yeah, just within the M D. We'll have separate discussions with other municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
That was your question? I think you answered my question, because I was going to ask, are you doing that for Bonneville Coal? Are you trying to kind of reach out to everybody else?
Yes, we've already spoken to the town of Bonneville and we will be moving on with Glendon and the city of Coal Lake as well, having the same conversation.
And I'll just ask, have you reached out to our Economic Development Board and our Economic Development Officer and had that discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
We had the opportunity to present to.
Yeah, we presented the same program to the economic committee already.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to speak to that because I sit on that board and, yeah, we, we discussed it and Bonneville's already gone ahead with it. We've talked about it here a bit as well, so do you have, can you share some stories with Bonneville? I know that some people have used the program already in the town, right?
We are just launching the program now.
Okay.
Yeah, we presented it to council in June and, yes, we are just putting together the marketing material to launch this month. There has been already significant interest because there was an article in the local paper about it. So they, yeah, got a bit ahead of us.
Counselor Jubenbaugh?
So would the, just home businesses qualify also or is it just strictly commercial or viewed? And also, can you apply strictly for the grant?
No.
No.
So the, the pro, the, the loan, the ten thousand dollars would be approved on two fronts. One, the project, so does it fit within the municipality's guidelines, bylaws, development permitting processes, that? So that's one thing that needs to be approved. The client also needs to be approved on the financial side, right? So there's two approvals. Yeah, because we are taking on a loan here. So there is a, we will not be approving a loan that wouldn't be approved by the municipality, you know, for that type of signage or building construction or paint color.
Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, just a question. It sounds like a great project that you're starting here, but I'm, I'm getting to the point of it says five loans over three years. That's kind of your plan? Was that, but will that be expanded? Because you look at Tabor, it was forty, forty-six over three.
So it's five, five loans per year.
Oh, it's five loans per year.
We ultimately base the program example on five. We can do more, we can do less, it's.
Do a higher amount or whatever you're agreeable to. Do you see, is this a good program? Then we can talk about that.
Yes, so there is flexibility. We just used five to kind of use an example. And there is some suggestion too that if, when you have a limit, it kind of sells out, it builds momentum, people get excited about it, so. But that's what we're looking to start. Tabor, in the early years, actually struggled to get the first loans through, but now that the program has momentum, they, they sell out very quickly. It took a few years to build.
Yeah, it's very timely, you know, I was in two M D businesses in the last two days that brought up investments that they were thinking about doing and this would be right in line with, with that. One was signage and one was interior, so. And the, as far as the, the five, that's the example, but you could have ten of a lesser value as well, right?
More a higher value.
We, yeah, so we, we would put the amount of loans that any, that each municipality wanted to do in your hands. So if you were to say, we actually want to do ten loans this year, that's what we would make available.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all up to you because it's a per, per loan deal. So you're covering the administration costs over the three-year term of the loan, which is that eight hundred and some dollars, and then you're covering the two thousand dollar grant.
So with the increased number of loans, you'd have an increased administration cost?
There would be an, yes.
Okay.
So that piece of the puzzle is in your hands.
Okay, Counselor Fadiev.
Yeah, I think it's a good start and we see a real bigger intake on that. We can always, they can always present to us next year and we can see where, where that kind of goes, but I think it's a, it's a great idea and definitely it's spurring, it's not only the ten thousand bucks, I think they're probably going to spend more than ten thousand, but it gives them that interest-free loan and they, they might have an extra two or three thousand dollars, you know, that they have cash on hand and then that helps the, you know, the ten thousand dollar free loan. I think it's a, not free loan, free to them, not to us, but it does spur, hate the word free, I don't know why I used it, but I apologize to myself. But, yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Jubenbaugh?
Yeah, no, I really, I really like what you, you've done so far and I think it's a good idea and probably what we would need is just a little poster of some sort that advertises the, what you're offering so that I could actually pinpoint it on, you know, just like on somebody's door or something. It would be kind of nice to, yeah, so make them aware that this is out there and it's going to be good for the local economy and everything, so it's good.
Was that a motion?
Sure.
Okay. Do you, do you want me to put words in your mouth? We have, we have options available.
Okay, I'm making the motion.
To, to go ahead with the contribution and then?
Go ahead, do the contribution.
Okay, so that, that council approve the contribution in the amount of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars towards the beautification program as requested by Community Futures Lakeland to be funded from the twenty twenty-one operating budget council transfers to non-government organizations. Discussion on the motion.
So discussion regarding my motion.
Okay, okay.
We've kind of forgot about our administration. This has been discussed with them and it's all, it's all, it's all okay that we're going to be handling this, I'm assuming?
Seeing nodding of heads, Mr. CEO?
So I'm, I'm good, I'm good with my motion then.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, administration is highly supportive of anything that will spur on local business in the region.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on the motion. We can call the vote.
We can call a vote.
Ms. Reeve, when, when will this kind of take effect, and when do we start asking rural businesses to get involved?
Okay, the motion is carried. Do we have an answer to that? How quickly would it be?
So we're basically, we're completing the marketing material for the town of Bonneville today, and so we'll be kind of drag-and-dropping your name into that sim, very similar marketing material. We will want to just discuss some of the optics with your administration.
Okay, sure.
Concerning the, you know, planning permitting, development permits, that sort of stuff, just so that we have a good understanding before we approve anybody, but yes.
Thank you.
But it's in the works for this fall.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great day.
With that, we'll take a, a five-minute recess then. All right, we're back from recess, and the next item on the agenda is planning and community services. Morning, Ms. Kimbough.
Good morning, morning.
First item, sorry, is Crane Lake pedestrian access.
So, on February 10th, 2021, council had approved the creation of a pedestrian trail access through the municipal reserve on the southwest 4 of 64, 4 west of the Fourth Meridian, after receiving a request from a backlot landowner at Crane Lake. A notification of the clearing of the lands was circulated to the adjacent landlords to the MR on June 15th. A number of questions and concerns were received from the adjacent landlords regarding the MR in question. You'll see those comments summarized in Appendix E. Following this, a site inspection was completed by administration this summer and, which confirmed that the concerns were valid. Located approximately 150 meters directly east of this lot is another MR identified within Appendix A. In there, you'll see also pictures of that area in Appendix C, where this second lot actually has three existing trails that lead to Crane Lake. These pathways could be maintained to MD trail standards as natural trails, and as well, we can, we would suggest installing signage to indicate their existence. So attached for council's information is Appendix A, which shows the location of the So specifically that first lot, with the arrow that says pathway to be cleared, and then you'll see to the right of that, the other MR, the second lot, where we do have the three existing trails that administration is proposing. We maintain to now our natural trail standards that are now in place in our policy, and just focus our efforts on that. The other reason for this is the Lot 1, which was the original proposed trail location. Upon the site visit, we found that the terrain is extremely, it has a very steep slope on it. The access, the direct location of the lake, there's actually trees right on the shoreline, and it's a very rocky location. Obviously, we would not be able to remove those trees, and the pathway would require stairs, given its steep slope.
Okay.
So council's recommendation, our recommended action here would be that council rescinds Resolution Number 21.121 from the February 10th regular meeting of council, and that furthermore, council directs administration to maintain the existing trails on Lot R2, Plan 1162RS, as natural trail as per MD Policy Number 3B013 Trail Development Standards Policy.
Okay, questions, council? Counselor Swiger.
It's more of a discussion, Mr. Reeve. So I've met with residents out there, they have a, a group that gets together throughout the year for different things, and they've got an upcoming annual general meeting, and they, they want to discuss some of these, some of these options. When we actually made that motion in February, we didn't specify where a trail was going to go, and so I wasn't really sure where it was. There's, there's several MRs on, on the lake there that people are using, and some of them know about them, some of them don't, because they're not marked. And so there's a bit more discussion to have, but I, I like what we're going to do here with this motion, because it makes more sense to have that bigger MR, which, you know, it's a fair amount wider, there's better access, and if we just kept these MRs tidied up and cleared and signage and stuff, then the people on, that aren't on lakeshore, that don't have that access, then, then have walking paths that they can use to get to the lake. And so like I said, I think there's going to be more, more discussion, and I, I've talked to Mr. Hogan, our C.A.O., about kind of the MR issue in the MD, and he's kind of assured that we'll have further discussions, a listing of all the MRs that we have kind of throughout the MD, not just at this lake even, and then how we can better kind of signage them or, or open them up for folks to use. One, one of these MRs, and it's probably the same one, we actually visited, is large enough that, you know, maybe we can consider doing something so that there's a place for people to park or whatever, I don't know, there's a lack of that out at Crane. I had one resident say they parked at the bin site on the west side, because it is an MR, but they felt they shouldn't, they weren't sure if they were allowed to park there, and I said, well, it's an MR, it's, you know, should, should be okay, it's access to the lake, and they took their kayak down and whatever, but we just need more information, more signage and that sort of thing. So I'll make the motion for the recommended action.
Okay, and that's that council rescind Resolution Number 21-121 from February 10th, and furthermore, that council directs administration to maintain the existing trails on Lot R2, Plan 1162RS, as a natural trail in line with our policy. Okay? Discussion? Counselor Fadav.
Good morning. So in, in Appendix A, it says pathway to be cleared, it's right in the middle, and then it seems to tie in along the lakeshore, so I was, I was kind of confused by this drawing here. Is that along lakeshore, is that ER or MR?
That is MR.
What, Lisa?
It's just an R. Did you know there was just Rs as well as MRs and ERs?
I can explain that.
Sure.
Yes. So before, we had MRs and ERs, stuff were just done as Rs as reserves, so they're both MRs and ERs. Usually, along the waterway, we would consider them environmental reserves, and the ones that are used as walkways would be considered municipal reserves, but they are technically just an R.
Okay, because yeah, because I see some buildings on there, and I'm just wondering how that, but anyway, that is just my own thoughts, but, okay.
Mr. C.A.O.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So I have had multiple meetings with, with members of the public from Crane Lake, phone calls and emails. I think their strategic planning, moving forward into the future, is going to have to have some discussion on council's position on MRs. There will be an MR bylaw, ER bylaw coming to council at some point in the not-too-distant future. The MR is a, will be a tricky subject, because there are people on both sides, even in terms of Crane Lake, even on the Crane Lake Society, there are differing opinions as to how the MR should be maintained, what they should look like, who should have access, who shouldn't have access. So I, I think we're going to have to have some strategic thinking about what we do long-term with our MRs and our ERs, and translate that into policy and then potentially into bylaw. But this is, this will be a difficult issue, because it's, I've had multiple phone calls from people telling me we're not doing enough, and other people telling me to leave them absolutely alone, so it, it will be a bit of a, of a Pandora's box once we get into it.
So I actually had a discussion with the Miracle Lake, because they're going through this right now, and, and part of what they're looking at is a, an agreement with those that already have what you would call a, a structure already on the, on the reserve, and have that agreement with the municipality that it is considered temporary and would have to be renewed. So that's kind of the way they're looking at, but they, they haven't dove down completely. It's going to be a long process, they said, as well. Okay, anything else? So we have a, a motion to rescind the, the one from February, and to go ahead with the existing trails and their development. Anything else? Okay, we can call a vote. Counselor Fadav.
Ms. Kimbough, in regards to, can I get an update on the Marie Lake MRs, as far as disposition goes from the province on the MRs?
I can look into that for you, counselor, and report back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that motion was carried. That is it. Thank you. Next up, infrastructure services. Good morning, Ms., Mr. Baspalco.
Morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I am before you today with a, an RFP for, to purchase a couple of Packers. Infrastructure Services Department needed to replace two self-propelled rubber tire Packers in 2021. The need was captured in the approved 2021 municipal budget under 2021 planned equipment purchase new initiatives. Each Packer had a budget of $135,000. Administration issued an RFP and received three submissions from two companies. The infrastructure services staff performed an evaluation of the submission shown in Appendix A. All tender prices were over the budgeted amount due to significant price increases over the last year. The lowest tender price was from Finning for $147,780 per unit, which is $12,780 over the 2021 budgeted amount per unit. This equates to about a 9.5% increase over the past year. Cost and sources of funding, $135,000 per unit of $270,000 total to be funded from the new initiatives budget, $12,780 per unit, or a total of $25,560 unbudgeted expenditure to be funded from the equipment reserve, or equipment replacement reserve. Administration's recommended action is that council approve the unbudgeted expenditure for the purchase of two Caterpillar CW16 Packers in the amount of $25,560 to be funded from equipment replacement reserves, and furthermore, the council approves the purchase of two Caterpillar CW16 Packers from Finning at a total cost of $295,560 to be funded from the 2021 capital budget.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Counselor DuChen.
Yeah, just to Reeve and Brian, I, the last time I took a drive through the yard there was in the spring there, and I noticed that we had, like, numerous, numerous Packers, so none of those would be available to you as, as equipment we could use, or?
Through the Reeve and, and to all of council, we do have a number of Packers, that is correct. However, we do have a number of crews working simultaneously, where three Packers would go here, three Packers would go there, and by the time you look at all the crews that we have going on at the same time, our Packers are used up. These ones are the wobbly Packers, so they are not the steel drum, they're not the pad foot Packers, they're, they're the, they're the ones that are for the cold mix.
Oh, I see.
Those kind of Packers. So that's what we sold, and we replaced, we needed to replace those three. So you are correct in, in the fact that we do have a number of Packers, however, if you look today, there, there is not a whole lot remaining.
All right, thanks, Brian. Thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Reeve and then Counselor Jubenville.
Thank you, I'll make the motion to approve this.
Thank you. Counselor Jubenville.
Well, I was just going to say, it's too bad. Timing is everything, right? You step in here after the fire trucks, I think we're out of reserve.
Sorry, I'll have to try to get ahead of the, on the agenda next time.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Reeve, I have a question, but not related, so let's vote first.
Okay. Okay, no other questions, we can call a vote. And that is on approving the unbudgeted expenditure for the purchase of two Packers in the amount of $25,560 to be funded from the equipment replacement reserve, and furthermore, council approved purchase in line with the budget. Yep.
Thank you, council.
Okay, and that is carried. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reeve, so, Mr. Baspalco, I've had a couple of questions about Township Road 630, and so I was out there...
Can we, can we take the, the individual questions, can we take those offline, instead of bringing them up at the, the council meeting?
We could, although it's residents asking, so I'm not sure, like, if they're watching, they'd like to know.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, there was an agenda approved for the meeting, and I would suggest, council should make every effort to stick with the approved agenda. If there's additions to the agenda, we, it would be up to council to allow them, but it puts staff in a position where we weren't prepared for a particular question, so we either try to give an answer on the fly with maybe some inaccuracy or not complete information. It would be much better if we knew about these questions in advance, or where they were added, and we'd have some time to have staff researching prior to a person standing at the podium.
I can, I can deal with that, because he'd probably have to...
Yeah, no, we've gone over that before, for sure.
He'd have to research it anyway, so that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take it offline. Thanks. Okay, next up, Mr. C.A.O.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'll turn this one over to, to Ms. Kimbough, but this is regarding the 2020, 2021 committees' boards list, offering some amendments to council prior to the organizational meeting of 2021.
In accordance with the Municipal Government Act, Section 145, administration is developing a consolidated committees bylaw for council's consideration later this fall. As part of this process, administration is proposing to amend the MD of Bonneville 2020- 2021 Committees/Boards List, which identifies the internal and external committees and boards that have an appointed member of MD Council. The revised list would be effective following the 2021 municipal election at the end of October. Attached for council's consideration in Appendix A is a list of the recommended committees and boards for removal, along with some additional detail, and Appendix B provides the final draft of revised 2021-2022 Committees and Boards List. Administration has held a preliminary meeting to review the committees list with our Reeve and Deputy Reeve, and this is the results of that discussion. So this is a preliminary recommendation through administration. As a committee bylaw, as with the development of this committee's bylaw, what normally occurs is we include all the terms of reference of all the committees that council has, has created. So the committee's bylaw pertains more to our internal committees, however, this list ties right back to that development.
So just on this one, to make council aware, we had a quick meeting with the, the C.A.O. and Ms. Kimbough, the Deputy Reeve and myself, to go through this list, and, and it was only a preliminary look at things and to, to give some ideas to help them with their recommendations. Final approval obviously always comes back to council, so. Mr. Fadav.
So, yeah, I've got about five notes on here, so please be patient. In regards to, the first one, in regards to the chambers, I know with the city of, so the Coal Lake Chamber of Commerce, they have, they have quarterly meetings, and it's just based on, on liaisons only. Basically, what we see there is we see members of the city of Coal Lake, Four Wing, the energy companies, there, Imperials, there, CNRL, and I think it's a, it's a good way for us to, you know, to be there as far as a, an active partner, because we are, and to see that go away, I think is, is, I'm not favorable of that at all, and I hope council considers that. I think the chambers form a... I think the chambers form a very good partnership with our business side and on the industry side, as, as well as our neighboring municipalities, is one comment. I think one thing we forgot on here was the Beaver River Regional Waste Commission is not on, on the list, which should be, like, has that been dissolved or is that something that I missed?
Mr. CAO.
Mr. Reeve, if I could ask council's indulgence, if we could go through these in...
In order?
In order. I think it's gonna be difficult for, for staff to track what will happen and what won't happen. And so if we could go through them, I'm certainly happy to take any comments council, or council has. I would, and I'll let Ms. Kimbough answer specifically to the commission, but because it's a commission, there would be no changes. We don't control that, we just put a counselor or two counselors, whatever, whatever the staff or the council complement on that is. But as a member of the commission, we have a position on the board, so it, it, it wouldn't be up for any changes.
Okay.
Can I finish my?
Let's, let's go down the list, because you're gonna be hitting some of them anyways, so that we cover everything. Not bouncing all over the place. First item was the, the staff liaison, and Counselor DeShane and I had sat on that, and we had, I think, one meeting in four years. And now it's covered by policy, so not, not a requirement anymore. Any comments? Okay. MD Policy Committee talks about a proposed creation of a new commi, council committee as a whole, and we've, we've had this come up a number of times. And I'm just gonna call on the CAO to, to speak to council committee as a whole. You've seen that our, our regular council meetings, some of them have been fairly extended. A committee of the whole is meant to fill in those holes in the weeks in between. So, Mr. CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I think a committee of the whole is an opportunity for council to get a deeper dive into, into some of these policy issues, as opposed to only several counselors having a discussion and then bringing it back and, and basically revisiting the issue in its entirety. It's our suggestion that we create a committee of the whole on a monthly basis, and one of the standing, there would be several standing agenda items, one would be recreation, because you'll see that come up here in a few minutes, one would be policy. So the policy development, as opposed to having a separate policy development committee and a separate recreation committee, they would come as a standing agenda item to the committee of the whole meeting for, for a deep dive into whatever those issues were. And then from there, recommendation being made to council at a regular council meeting as to, and of course, no decisions would be made on these items at a committee of the whole meeting, the decision would still be made by, by council as a whole, but it would allow a much, a much more in-depth discussion on particular, on particular items than, than I think we're currently having.
Counselor Swiger and then Jubenville.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree, like, we sat through some of those policy committee meetings, and they can go on, you know, they can go on for a long, a long amount of time just to go over, you know, three or four policies, so, yeah, kind of, I guess, an extended meeting with all council and probably makes sense.
Counselor Jubenville.
So are we talking about holding two, two committee meetings and two council meetings per month? Is that, is that what we're thinking of?
Through the, through the chair to Counselor Jubenville, actually, what would be in my mind would be two regular meetings of council and a committee of the whole meeting on, on once a month basis. So three meetings, three, two formal council meetings and a committee of the whole once a month. So three meetings a month.
Further to that, then, you're talking committee, like, committee meeting as a whole council, then we would be dealing with policy, so that would be over and above the committee meeting?
So the committee of the whole meeting, through the chair, Counselor Jubenville, the committee of the whole meeting would have as a standing agenda item any policies that would have come to the policy committee, or any recreation items that would have come to the rec, committee, or anything else that needs, that needs a deep dive. For example, there, if we wanted to talk about MRs and what the MR policy should be, the MR, that allows some development, maybe over several committee of the whole meetings to deal with these, as opposed to, as opposed to, we, we don't often, we'd, we'd like more direction from council, other than through a formal council meeting, in terms of is this the direction you'd like to go with a particular policy, with a particular recreation activity? Should we go deeper into this, or should we just stop? And that committee of the whole would allow, would allow for that discussion to take place. So we'd be recommending two regular council meetings, one committee of the whole meeting with several standing agenda items on that committee of the whole meeting.
In a way, it's, it's going back to the way it was done, you know, many years ago, right, where you had a kind of a committee meeting where you did a lot of pre-discussion and then came back for decisions at the council meeting.
Yes, Mr. Reeve, the committee meetings were just discussion, there was no motions made at those. So are we having two council meetings, one committee, and the third, or the fourth Wednesday would be a policy committee meeting? Or the fourth Wednesday would be nothing?
Through the Reeve, to Deputy Reeve, Criviac, my, my suggestion is to limit those meetings to three a month total. One of the things I found when I got here, as well as comments from staff, is we were on this hamster wheel, and that was actually a word used by the general manager, we're on this hamster wheel of, all we did as senior management was go from one council meeting to another council meeting to another council meeting. It was, it was just, we literally would come out of council on Wednesday and have to have our stuff to the Legislative Services Department for the next council meeting, literally that afternoon. And I would suggest that we lengthen our council meetings on, on the Wednesdays, instead of being done at noon or one o'clock like often we are. We have a day, and, and the same with the committee halls, so have three full days, and give us the extra day a month that we've got some other time to do other MD business.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I didn't agree with having motions made every single Wednesday, it was too much stress on the staff.
Yes.
I agree with that. They had to prepare constantly for that, so I agree with you. Thank you.
Counselor Carson.
Yeah, I'm just, so I'm curious, who would have been staff committee meetings, like all, all as well?
Through the Reeve to Counselors Carson, same staff. It would be, it would be senior management, whoever was required. If there was nothing, for example, for Parks and Rec at that particular meeting, then we would, the Parks and Rec Department would likely not be represented, so it would be partially agenda-driven, but the general managers would all be here. Part of that is, is for the general managers and for myself to get a sense of where council's going, although we might not get, you know, a motion direction, but, yeah, you guys are heading in the right direction, no, you missed the mark in this one, and it allows us to come back, fine tune stuff before it actually comes to council, and then there'd be a discussion at, at council as to the exact details of whatever was brought forward. But specifically to the question, general managers would be there and support staff as required depending on the agenda.
Counselor Padeev.
I think in theory, it all sounds good, but it's a matter, I think, going, going ahead with this, I think we should be open to, if this doesn't work, that we return to two committee meetings. There's a lot to cover, and there's, there's a reason why these committee meetings are somewhat busy on a, on a separate committee members, right? So having it as all of council, I'd like to see where this goes, but I'm not too confident in, in having three meetings.
Okay. The next two items are ID 349, and that no longer exists, so that's two more down for me. Protective Services, the MD School Resource Program Advisory Committee, never, never, never had a meeting, so that, that one can probably go. The Road Bans Committee. We'll have the CAO speak to this one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Overarching policy from council, establishing the fact that we want to protect our infrastructure through road bans, but the, the appropriate people to make those decisions are typically our operations department, who know our roads, know what roads should be banned, what roads shouldn't be banned. I would suggest that that be left to administration to determine when a ban comes on and when a ban comes off and what roads receive the bans.
Counselor DeShane.
I totally disagree with that. Each ward has its own unique amount of traffic and types of traffic, and road conditions vary from road to road with that much traffic. So I believe this is something that maybe all of council should be a part of, because the trouble I ran into when the road bans were removed this spring in my ward, and it's actually being discussed with me right now with members of my ward four. So to me, this is a way bigger issue than it's being taken here by administration, so I, I'm looking for support from rest of council to keep this in council and be a part of it.
So prior to this, like, I was on the, the road ban committee, and alone, as the, the only member from council there, I'm, I'm not qualified to judge road condition. I, I think, what I do think we need is improved discussions with the industry on, on maintaining their portion of the road when it gets out of hand. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. Would council be open to ensuring that communication of an upcoming road ban, if that were to take place, and give a, you know, a one-week kind of timeline to allow input from council back to administration? Would that suffice? Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I, I would just, you know, guarantee, I mean, that should be a given, like, and I, I agree with Mr., or Counselor DeShane, that the last road bans, I, I had no idea either that they were coming on, so we, honestly, yeah, we need that communication. So I don't care if there's a committee or whatever, I don't, don't need to, I don't, I'm not a guy that looks at a road and says, I'm gonna ban it, but I certainly, you know, want that, whoever's doing that to discuss it with us and tell us what they're doing and when, so, yeah.
Yes, to the Reeve and rest of council, I, I do not think that a committee, a small committee, is enough. It has been doing well, but I don't think administration alone should be allowed to, to make those calls, because they were wrong in the past, and I, I was not happy, and my residents are not happy to this date, on some of the calls that were made, so I'm sure Counselor Criviac would agree with me, with the amount of traffic we get through our wards and the destruction of our roads, it's, it's a constant complaint. So I, I, I would rather all of council be involved in those decision makings.
Yeah, I do have a lot of heavy oil traffic in my ward as well, just that Counselor DeShane does, so, yeah, unless this can be brought up in the committee as a whole meetings every month or whatever, but I kind of agree with Counselor DeShane in a sense.
So if we were to put it in as an item, as an addition to a committee as a whole meeting, prior to them coming in, would that, would that work?
To Mr. Reeve and the rest of council, yeah, I, I think some of that decision making should be looked at by council at that time, and, and yes, if it's a council or a committee as a whole meeting, that, that would be great, that, something has to be controlled a little bit by each ward, because some, some of the decisions weren't taken into account, some of the problems we had, so that would be very much asked for here on that.
Mr. Reeve. Mr. CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I guess the question is, is the protection of the infrastructure gonna be dealt with by the people who know the roads? Or are we going to infuse politics into the protection of the infrastructure? That, that's the question. Our roadspeople are, are professionals, they're, they're the technical experts, they're on the roads on a daily basis, and to begin to make decisions on road bans based on divisions or wards, seems to me that we'll be taking the technical expertise out of it and beginning to do road bans based on what our residents would like and what's best for the road.
Counselor Padeev and then Jubenville.
Yeah, you know, I, I think this is just more than just a road ban that we have to look at. Obviously, there's, there's reasons why these bans are in place and why the roads are breaking up at the same time. So, you know, should be, we're looking at upgrading those roads that are used on a, on a heavy basis, and why they're falling apart. I think that's what should be looked at, is, is upgrading these roads with industry so they don't get beat up and doesn't cost a great fair in the end, you know, some heartache.
Counselor Jubenville.
Yeah, I would, I would echo our CAO's words there about having our Transportation Utility Department deal with that, and as council, just so that we're, we're made aware of when, when they're taking place, when they're coming on, when they're coming off. But I certainly don't want to be called by someone in the department, hey, come and have a look at this road, because we want your input. No, leave it to the people that, that know.
Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, also to Counselor DeShane, could this also be part of the Industry Liaison Committee and?
Absolutely.
Have a look at these roads, like, in the springtime, more often than just once a month? Having meetings maybe twice a month, and I'd like to be on that committee with Counselor DeShane, Ward Three and Four have the heaviest traffic, and we also provide the most income for the MD. Thank you.
Just, yeah, just a quick comment.
Counselor Swiger first.
Yeah, I just, thanks, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, agree with the CAO on this one. Maybe I shouldn't always agree with you, Mr. CAO, but, but, you know, you're absolutely right, it's, we've got lots of our staff and, and, you know, guys out there that know what they're doing to tell us when these roads need to be banned, but the problem in the past was, we weren't informed what was going on, so that's why this, you know, if there's a committee, and this only happens, what, once, once a year or something, so, you know, there's a good committee meeting to have lots of discussion before you ban it, admin's gonna tell us, you know, what they're doing and why, and that's fine, I just wanted to know.
Counselor Padeev.
I, I don't think this is just a Ward Three or Ward Four issue, I think this is an all of MD issue, and I think that should be looked at, too.
Okay. Counselor DeShane.
I, I agree totally with you, excuse me, to the Reeve and council. It is a MD issue, and the cost of rebuilding these roads and maintaining them continues to go up as the industry abuses these roads and the road use agreements that were in place that we had no say in here as council. So I'm getting phone calls and texts continuously about the 24-hour day trucking throughout the MD, and the abuse of the trucks taking shortcuts and creating havoc with the, the landowners that never seen a truck on their road before. So this is an issue for the whole MD. That's, that's my issue.
So, you know, just as we've done with, with everything else in regards to having decisions come forward, a road ban, a decision is being made, I'm wondering if we can challenge administration to develop a criteria that is also used to back up their reasons for a road ban. I think the, you know, again, we refer on, to the experts, we've got a number of sources out there. Would administration be open to coming back to council, you know, in that, that timeframe prior to? Basically, and that, you know, it gives, gives all the backing in the world, it also gives council something to maybe speak to the residents about as well. Counselor DeShane.
Yes, I, I would agree with that totally, and that, to me, I thought that was part of the Industry Liaison Committee, and we can bring that forward to the rest of council, but I think as a group, that would work just great.
Okay, is administration good with that?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Yes, we absolutely could attempt to create a, a service standard by which the road ban and a policy by which administration would work under. Road bans, however, are not just for industry, and that's, industry's a big player here, obviously, but road bans also are for those who are non-industry players, and so it's just, I just wanted to kind of make that point. We absolutely could, before spring road bans come up again, we absolutely can come before council with a criteria that would deal with particular roads. We also probably have in the past done a good enough job of communicating with council. Counselor wakes up in the morning, looks at Facebook and sees there's a road ban on, is probably not a good idea either. So I would suggest that probably there could be a better job of communicating with council when those bans go on and when those bans go off. So we certainly will work towards that, and then once policy's in place, then, then it would be no point, there would be no relevance to having a committee, because it would, we just act under policy and, and communicate with council when we're doing those things through policy.
So is our council good with the, those safeguards being put in place then? Okay, okay, so that, that committee is gone. The Regional Airport Committee, oh, sorry, Counselor Jubenville.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, yeah, so, and it's also important to keep in mind that, you know, the frost comes out of the roads two, three weeks later, and it's...
the frost comes out of the roads two, three weeks later in Ed's Ward than mine, right? So it's quite a bit.
It's quite true.
It's kind of unique, right?
Yeah, yeah, good point, good point.
Through the Reeve, through the Reeve to Counselor Juvenville's point, the point is well taken. All, I know the comment was tongue-in-cheek, but we do tend to have this unanimity on a road ban where a ban is countywide on such and such a day, and the road ban is off countywide on such and such a day, and I think that's a weakness in the program where I think we need to look, I would not say it's individual divisions, but probably more specifically certain roads probably could have a ban go on earlier and a ban come off earlier or later, as the case may be, as opposed to just this general date of, you know, bans go on on April 15th and bans come off on June the 15th. That probably should be a bit more customized throughout the municipality, because there are areas in the municipality who the frost will come out of the ground later than in southern parts of the municipality, so I think, although the comment was tongue-in-cheek, I think it's actually, I think it's actually a valid point.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I think Fort Kent never freezes up.
I think we're slipping off to the side. A lot of hot air in Fort Kent, I know, so. The Bonneville Regional Airport Committee, well, that one is a little bit defunct right now. We've had some discussions with the, about the airport, and there is a need for, to engage with the users out there, for sure, and not be limited to just the flying club, but the charter use industry as well. On that one, stakeholder engagement, how would we deal with that? Mr. CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I would suggest that at some point in the not-too-distant future, that administration would come with an airport policy, and that policy would indicate that there would be X number of stakeholder meetings on an annual basis that would be required to have. We could identify who those stakeholders were, obviously, industry, the charter operations that come and go, obviously, the flying club, individual airplane owners, but we would have probably a minimum of two stakeholder meetings a year, talk about what's going on, what may be going on. I would suggest maybe a spring and a fall meeting, that kind of stuff, but I do believe we should have a policy in terms of the airport itself, which will probably come through with a few other issues to discuss with council, but at a minimum, there should be two stakeholder meetings a year.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, just a comment for that, I, you know, we don't need a committee, but we certainly need more information back to council on what's going on at the airport and, you know, what kind of issues we're having, so I'll just look forward to more information.
Okay. Counselor Scarsen.
I'm just curious, so the airport falls under TNU, right? Like they would be the one, very important.
Yeah.
Through the Reeve, to council, it's actually a brief conversation we had just before council meeting this morning, as mentioned of the Reeve, with as busy as the airport is becoming, we had multiple charter flights back in yesterday, the Dash Eight came in in the evening, Sunwest was parked here all day with a, with a big business jet, is, we probably need to have administration first and then probably into council as to what our long-term plan is and how we want to manage that facility. We can let it go and grow moss on it the way it was, or we can, we can manage it like it's actually, it's an economic benefit to the municipality, which it is. There are going to be some challenges because our TNU department, who looks after it, we don't, we don't have anybody out there managing anything on a day-to-day basis. It's, they go out there, they fix a pothole and they leave, so the airport's kind of left. So we're going to have to have some conversations as to how we think the best way to actually coordinate activities at the airport from a user perspective and obviously from an MD perspective and a maintenance perspective, and I think that's going to be some conversation moving forward as well.
Counselor Swiger, Mr. Reeve, I'll just agree, because like 100%, if we don't have somebody looking after the airport in a management kind of role, you know, advertising it and promoting it, it doesn't get, we fix a pothole, but that's it, and so it'll grow moss, so I know how we want to do that, but, yeah, you've got to promote these things and manage them properly.
Counselor Juvenville.
Yes, Mr. Reeve, so the reason that we took over this, the airport, was to enhance it and just make it a lot better, so when administration looks at this, I would like administration to look at bettering it and not just coasting and just operating it, so I certainly want it to grow.
Okay. Counselor Fadiev.
Yeah, in our city airport, we also have to be very careful so we don't make it too attractive for people to fly out of here, live somewhere else. You know, a lot of these energy companies are, you know, very open to having people live in Calgary and Kelowna and places like that and not live in our greater MD, so, you know, I think it's a fine balance, but I think also, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing these people make their money here and leave here and spend their money in Calgary, Edmonton, Kelowna, and I think it's a fine balance, but we should be, should be careful at that.
I think that's something we can probably bring up in our industry meetings, right? Is that we have a concern about the number of folks who are traveling in and out, and, you know, consider encouraging some of those employees to stay in the area. Yeah, good point.
Mr. Reeve, if I, to Counselor Fadiev's point, and it's a bigger question, I know when I worked at the Lackabish, there was a big question on shadow population, and we approached the government at that time about additional MSI funding based on shadow population. I'm not sure if there's ever been a study done here as to what our shadow population is. We have our normal population, but those people who come and go, live in camp, work in the MD, they could be thousands of people more than are actually on our official census. Those people cost the MD money in terms of our infrastructure, our roads, et cetera, et cetera. I think we should be tracking shadow populations and approaching the provincial government for additional funding through our MSI programs based on those shadow populations. We weren't entirely successful in Lackabish in getting money, but it certainly raised the issue, and I know that the province did deal with it kind of in a, in a different way, but they did recognize that some of our, some of the north, north-central municipalities with a significant industry impact have shadow populations in the thousands, and they all have an impact on our services.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve.
Yeah.
To Counselor Swiger, did you not have shadow population numbers years ago? I believe we did.
Yeah, we did.
There was, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Reeve, back in 2014, when we did our municipal census, we did get approval from the province to include a shadow population count, and it was significant, definitely over a thousand for sure. Since that time, just in the past couple of years, municipal affairs has changed the rules. Municipalities can still do a municipal census, however, municipal census population numbers no longer are used in MSI calculations or provincial, most provincial grant funding to municipalities. Instead, they're using their own calculation based on the federal census. So they do encourage municipalities to still do municipal census, however, it's more for the municipal's own economic development tracking purposes and information. So it worked well when we did do it in 2014, it was a significant increase, but unfortunately, right now, it's no longer allowed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, into Environmental Health Services, the MD Waste Reduction and Recycling Committee. Counselor Fadiev.
I sure hope this doesn't go away. It seems like it's going to. It says in there that, you know, we are going to be talking on a, on a regular basis at the committee level, but just having one meeting on the committee level, we just heard that, you know, we need an airport policy, we need a service policy on our B or RFA, we need all these other things that I'm not, shouldn't say they're more prevalent, sorry, prevalent to that, but we also got to be careful to that. I've seen a lot of positive changes with, with our, you know, waste reduction and our recycling and upcycling and all, you know, and all that, you know, through the committee, and I'm just afraid that it's going to get squashed way down and pressed down to where it's not going to be very effective.
Counselor Scarsen.
Yeah, I was going to save this comment to the end, but, you know, Counselor Fadiev brought it up here, and I kind of see a trend of kind of moving a lot of these to the committee meeting each month, and now it, I just, I kind of fear that things are starting to start getting lost and kind of shuffled to the back end, then all of a sudden, it'll be two, three months before we end up talking about things that should have been talked about each month, and we haven't even gotten to the recreation part of it either, right? So, I mean, just, it's a concern I have, I get what you guys are trying to do for sure and kind of streamline everything, but I can already see where this is likely going ahead, so, just my comments.
We have a number of items that have to do with landfills, recycling, cares, is there a way to, to put them all into one?
You know, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think with cares and, and this committee could definitely be put together. The unfortunate part about the cares committee, there's only one person, which is tough to do, you know, any kind of, any kind of good discussion if there was two on there, and that person would alternate going to cares meetings, because, Counselor Juvenville, how often are they, the cares meetings, once, like, once a quarter?
Yeah.
Right?
We just have one year.
Mm-hmm. So I, I think if that, that's, that's looked at, I think it's, it's very good, but I just not in favor of losing, losing that entirely. For sure, and I'll be 100% okay with that.
Okay, Mr. CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Yeah, we are totally open to combining, to having a waste committee, if that's council's desire, just there are three committees now all dealing with waste, and that struck us as.
Raceful.
Thank you. So if it's council's wish to combine that into a single committee, who would have standing agenda items, one would be waste reduction, et cetera. I think the other thing that we, again, and I've mentioned it on the airport and we talked about it on the road ban committee, is we need to have better policy by which administration's clear on what implementation is. So if it's a clear policy of the municipality to divert solid waste from landfill into recycling, et cetera, et cetera, we should have that as a policy statement moving forward that gives us, that we come back to the committees, and these are the things we're doing and implementing based on what, what council's, we may have a similar policy or policy that says something to that effect, but we, we need to expand those policies, and that really would be, become the function of the committee, is to confirm that those policies have been implemented by administration, and we're moving forward on those, on those items.
Okay. Counselor Fadiev.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think this could eventually get there, but right now, I think it's too much, because we are so behind in our policies that, you know, again, on that, on that, on that committee meeting, it's going to be an eight, nine-hour meeting on a regular basis, going to be lunch and supper involved, and maybe a doghouse if I stay way too long, but overall, you know, I think it's, we're going there, I don't think we're there yet, I think we have to, you know, we might see it three, four years from now.
I think you need a tougher chair at those meetings. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, Mr. Reeve, I would, I would like to see the, the waste and the recycling, all that put together so that there is, there is, there is a committee for that, and there's, there's just ongoing changes, especially in recycling and, yeah, renewable energy, so there needs to be ongoing discussion on that.
I, I think you, Counselor Juvenville also want to include the Beaver River Waste Commission as well on that, so three, three into one.
So through the Reeve, if we look at Appendix B, the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission, the Alberta Coordinated Action for Recycling, Alberta Care, both of those would be combined with an MD Waste Reduction and Recycling Committee, so would that mean, am I hearing that the participants in our committee would then represent these other committees as part of their responsibility for these external groups?
Yeah.
And I think within that committee, there's three members, each member can be, can be posted to, say, the Beaver River or the Care, and then this way, not all three of us are showing up to every meeting, right? It's just one person's in charge or appointed within that, that might work or not.
Mr. Reeve, just on the Beaver River Waste Management Commission, that's a separate board, we put a counselor on, and I just, it's, sometimes the commissions, much like Munichor being a Part Nine company, it's important to recognize that the counselor who sits on the Beaver River Regional Waste Commission acts in the best interest of the commission.
Yeah.
And not necessarily in the best interest of the county. So I would suggest that whoever is the selection for the commission seat would sit probably on, on these waste committees as well, just to provide information, but that committee wouldn't have, doesn't have the authority to place that person on the commission, that would have to be counseled, that's a separate external commission.
Yeah. Okay. Next one is Public Health and Welfare Services, Cold Lake Harts for Healthcare. Myself and Counselor Duchesne have sat on that one, and really, you, they have a meeting and you're in for the first 15, 20 minutes of the meeting, and then you have the option of leaving and they go into their, their own meeting, and really, as far as updates that we have to provide to them on a monthly basis, it's, it's just not there. I would prefer to have them give us an update, maybe on a quarterly basis, rather than have us allot somebody to sit on, on their committee, so I would suggest us pulling out of that one and just ask them for updates. Okay. The Seed Cleaning Co-op. Okay? And this question has come up before in regards to business and it being an active business. I wonder if the CAO can speak to that one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. It is a co-op private entity, and there are issues that could arise on conflicts with the MD being part of a private entity. Most municipality, a lot, I shouldn't say most, I have no numbers to back that up, but a lot of municipalities have been backing out of their seed cleaning committees over the years for exactly the same reasons. They are private, they're, although they might not make money, they are technically trying to make some money, and it's really not appropriate for the municipality to sit on, on that, on that type of committee, but I'll leave it to council to determine whether they want to stay with the Seed Cleaning Co-op, but we don't feel it's appropriate for the MD to be a voting member of, of a private co-op.
So Counselor Juvenville, are we a voting member there at that, that board, or merely a liaison?
Well, that's the, that's the question that I've had, and I never did get an answer, right?
Okay.
So, so I do vote, right?
Okay.
So, yeah, so I'm thinking that we should be sitting as a non-voting member if we, if, if we do even at all, right? So.
So now, we also have staff that go there.
So, yeah.
And, Mr. Reeve, and members of council, that would be my suggestion, if we want to have a participation at the seed cleaning and be able to bring information back to council, we do have an ag department who is perfectly capable, I believe they attend currently.
Okay.
I think that's probably much more appropriate. That would also eliminate the voting question, if staff don't vote, so, and we would still be participating in the seed cleaning plant, and that information could then come back to council through the ag department.
Counselor Duchesne.
Through the Reeve and Al, yeah, that's the question I was going to ask, as a, as an employee, or we wouldn't have voting authority on that board, so if we, if we wanted to, we could just look at the terms of reference for that committee from them, but I don't think we need to after this, so.
Okay. And I guess, you know, we would just ensure that we got that regular reporting coming back then, and I know that they always invite us to their annual general meeting as well, so there is a chance for engagement with them at that, that time, so. Okay, so that's good, that's okay. Okay. Recreation and Cultural Services, the Rec and Cultural Advisory Committee. This one, I think we, we had like two meetings, maybe?
We did through the Reeve, we did. We did through the Reeve. We did just recently hear from the city to confirm that this committee is technically on hold. They have created a second committee called the Community Recreation, Land Culture and Heritage Grant Committee, which is taking over a good portion of what the purpose of this committee, which is established through their bylaws, current function was. So they were non-committal as to what the future holds at this time.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was like in, I guess, in partnership with the city of Cold Lake that wanted some, you know, they wanted our opinion on some of the stuff. And it was a great little committee that, that they had. But I know there's some, some restructuring going on and, but it, it involved a lot of the groups that the MD was involved with. And it was, it was key, but I know they're going through some changes. And I think for now, it's a good, good reason to take it off.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reeve, I just, yeah, I never sat on that committee, but we need more input, though. We're more kind of, you know, to find out what they're doing as far as recreation and if they're building something, let us know. So, I mean, because it's our residents using all that stuff. So kind of just nice to have somehow that better communication.
Yeah, Counselor Agar, this was a little different. It was, this was based on grants and things like that that were going out there. But, yeah, it was, you know, you kind of, you know, we seen a grant go through and then two weeks later, we seen that same group coming here asking for money. It was good, but it was kind of, you know, you kind of had a, you know, like your pulse on the, your finger on the pulse. It was nice, but I know they're, they're changing things.
Okay. And part of the, as far as new initiatives, the verbiage is there in the ICF in regards to, to big projects. They're supposed to let us know ahead of time so that we can have some input and be involved.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
So, you know, I, I hundred percent agree. We should get that input. I, I'll just, I was there recently in Cold Lake and they're expanding their skateboard park. I mean, is that something that maybe, you know, we could have at least found out about? You know, just that kind of thing, because our residents are using that stuff, but I don't know.
Yeah. And, and maybe it has to do with, you know, now that we're, we're done with COVID, we can get back to having joint council meetings and cover some of those items, too. It's a good point.
But, yeah, the, the first part was in partnership with some big sponsors as well, like Mock One sponsored it for a tune of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So a lot of that part was driven by, you know, business partners and, and industry as well. So not so much of the ICF. So we'll see. Hopefully that will change.
Okay. And Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Members of council. You made a comment about getting together the joint council meetings. As we have three internal neighbors, the city of Cold Lake, town of Bonneville and the village of Glendon, I do think that there's something that we're missing on our committee list, and that would be what I'd call an IMC. It would be an intermunicipal committee that would meet on a, on a tri-monthly basis with the city of Cold Lake. What that committee looked like in terms of its makeup internally would be a separate question. But we actually have those meetings where we bring updates on what we're doing to those municipalities. They bring updates to us as to what they're doing. And potentially even expanding outwards to County St. Paul, County Lacklavish and, and others that, that we, that we have a boundary on. We're currently not doing that, and I think that would be something we might want to add to the committee list as opposed to taking away.
Counselor Skarsen?
Yeah, I think that you're bang on there, Mr. CEO. And I, I thought that's what the regional recreation committee was kind of formed to do. And I know this one never really met or we, we kind of started off strong. I'm kind of jumping ahead here a bit, but it's, it's one that I think is still really important to do. And how you, how you do it, if it's through a joint council or if it's through this committee or whatever. You know, we, we lost discussions to get this committee in place and just never, once you start to get some, some traction, you know, we stop meeting or whatever, right? So it's almost, you know, it's almost where a program director for the three municipalities would, would work as well, right? Someone, because I think there's lots of opportunity. We just need to be able to talk about the ideas we all want to do and, and make them happen together. So.
Yeah, you make a good point. And so as councils, we, we get together on the odd occasion. What about administration, getting together with their counterparts in the others?
So, Mr. Reeve, members of council, so we had IMC set up at Rocky View. And what ended up happening at those meetings was whichever councils were placed on the IMC, the IMC was also staffed with the CAO general managers. I absolutely agree with Counselor Skarsen. The only thing that I would suggest is it shouldn't be limited to just recreation. It's updates on planning issues. What are they doing on our boundary? Is there, is there a development taking place on our border that we didn't know about? They didn't come up through an intermunicipal development plan or those kind of things. Is there going to be, it's a place where we can talk about things that are recreation related, planning related? Are there, are there friction points that this, this committee could discuss? We would have to go back to the other municipalities and ask them to form a very similar committee. I would think they'd be quite interested in that. And I think recreation would be a big player in that, but as would planning and, and others. So staff would be involved at the, at that committee level as, I certainly have some ideas. Because I know what it's looked like and other municipalities have been at, but it's worked very well. And oftentimes, it, it can be used as that escape valve if there's tensions rising and pressure rising between two municipalities. Often it can be released there with some, some honest conversation at the table with, you know, with a limited group of people.
Counselor Swartert, then Fadav?
You said exactly what my thoughts were here, because it's, recreation's really important for sure. But like I look at lots of the other things that we should be involved in, water and sewer for one. With the town of Bonneville, when they do expansions or whatever, we've got new developments around Moose Lake. We're not having those discussions where we can probably work together, city, Cold Lake, same thing, water and sewer systems that they're putting in that, you know, it's running right by our residents. We don't even discuss it. We never discuss it. And we could, you know, have those discussions, finding out what they're doing.
Okay. Counselor Fadav?
I know that there's some possible committees are going to be forming soon with, on a regional basis through Community Futures and our administration and the town administration and things like that. Mr. Keenbaum, Mrs. Keenbaum, could you expand on that?
Certainly. Through the Reeve, we have received, administration has received an invitation from Community Futures Lakeland to join the beginnings of a regional discussion. They've called it a regional economic information partnership committee where they've invited ourselves, the city of Cold Lake, the two chambers of commerce, Cold Lake First Nations, town of Bonneville and Alberta Labor and Immigration to come and sit and have a discussion. When, and this discussion would be around economic stability, growth, job creation, diversified and competitive local rural economies and possible how we become more sustainable economically within our own individual communities. It was discussed when it was originally brought forward, that this be at an administrative level, this preliminary time. Because as we all know, there's this level and there's this level and they're very different conversations, for sure. So this is a perfect example of the region wanting to come together and start these discussions.
Okay.
I should also add that I am attending the meeting and it is this Friday.
Okay, we're down to the MD Recreation Committee. And again, it's, the recommendation is looking at committee as a whole. Because I know we, yeah, same thing. We have had a lot of rehashing of the same things. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just reiterate, this is another one that I thought that we, you know, we've kind of struggled to get back into as a committee. And now taken away, it's, I, I just feel that it'll be, you know, we got the same sentence that a lot of these, you know, with the creation new council committees, all the de-discussions will, will go into there. So I just, I feel like we're going to be missing out on things again. And I think there's been lots of good things come out of that recreation committee, some good discussions, right? So my two cents, I'd hate to see it go.
I just say we got to, you know, rely on, on yourself and other counselors to just make sure if this happens that we're very vocal on, you know, on these committees and discuss, you know, this joint, this committee that we're having once a month or whatever. There'll be lots on it. It'll be like Counselor Playa says, we'll be there for lunch and breakfast and dinner, whatever it is. But, yeah, we got it. We can't water down this, the discussion, though. Still got to be there. It'll just take longer.
Mr. CEO?
I think, Mr. Reeve, members of council, if council's nervous about the recreation committee moving to committee the whole, would council consider making all of council the recreation committee? There has been some confusion on staff part. I have, I fielded comments from staff. They're not sure if they're getting direction from the committee or if they've got to wait for council to weigh in on something. And it would be much clearer if it was all of council who sat on the committee. And that doesn't mean all of council has to show up to every committee meeting. But, but would council give any consideration of that, then?
Counselor Fadav?
That makes total sense to me, because I know we had a lot of conversation in the past few years where, you know, you, you talk about stuff and, and, and it's kind of like a little bit in no man's land. But I think doing this, I, I think moving forward, we tried and as long as we're open to change in the next year or so, if this, this doesn't work, right? I think there's some passionate people about rec here, so I think they, you know, I don't think they'll let us slide.
Okay. So where are we at on that one? We at, we good with committee as a whole as a trial there? Okay. So essentially, it's the same thing. All of, all of council on a committee versus committee as a whole, really very close to the same thing. We're just throwing words around, I think.
Maybe, Mr. Reeve, we need to have two meetings, committee as a whole, both Wednesdays, you know, to, to ensure.
Yeah, no, it's, it's entirely a possibility. As these things start coming forward, there is the ability to, to call special meetings that would fill in the blanks. You bet.
Because I see all these being diverted to committee as a whole, and I, I see the concerns of some of these counselors. So that might be another option. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Who said this was going to be a short meeting? Okay, Regional Recreation Committee, I, I, I think we, we beat that one around a bit already. And I think we can handle it through that joint council meetings and getting a better communication circle with those folks. And again, that, that's, that can be either all of council or it can be a new committee. We can discuss that when it comes up. The chambers of commerce, the, the question around these things has always been treating, treating them equally. So we'll have both representatives weigh in on this one.
Yeah, I think I weighed in, in it earlier. I, I think it's a, it's a good thing. But with the way, I don't know how the Bonneville Chamber has it, but I know with the Cold Lake Chamber, you know, because you're not, because you're there as liaisons, you're not there as a member of the chamber. So you don't get to vote or have any kind of decisions. With the Chamber of Commerce in Cold Lake, it's, it's liaison's end of it. And it's forming relations with industry and the city of Cold Lake and Four Wing. Because a lot of times, we know, you know, that's where we heard of the issues of, of, you know, like of manpower, of, you know, being, you know, viable community. And that's where we came up with that idea of doing a program together with municipalities and, and industry and, and the city of Cold Lake. Otherwise, if we won't have those relationships, we would have totally missed it. I've always, I've always liked the quarterly meetings and I, I would still like to, like to see them there. I don't know what happens in, in Bonneville, if they require you to be there every meeting. But I think it's just quarterly stuff I love.
Yeah, to the Reeve and council and staff, I, I don't, I don't know if we're that important of a factor in our Bonneville Chamber of Commerce. All I do is report anything that we might be something big, major we're doing at the MD to them. And they, they have their, their spiel in their meeting and discuss their things and show off their, showcase their upcoming events and stuff. But I'm not, I, I think reporting back and forth is, is enough. I don't think we have to be on a committee at, because we don't even, at the MD of Bonneville, I don't think we even have a business listing of our businesses within the, with our MD. So it's basically the town of Bonneville Chamber of Commerce. And I think there's a smattering of a few businesses from the MD in there. So, you know, no voting, no, nothing else. I, I think we'd be okay with the recommended updates. Personally, I don't know if any other counselor would think differently. I've had no input on that.
Anyone else?
Counselor Swartert? I think I'd, I'd be happy with having the chambers come and talk to us four times a year. Tell us what they're doing.
A couple of times, maybe?
Yeah, it just depends on how active they're, they are, right? They might have something burning they want to tell us, but.
I think alongside of things, I think just the one, once a year report from them is, is, is fine. But, I mean, I, I feel so strongly about Cold Lake that if you guys don't approve the, I guess, the, the amendments part of it, if council's okay with it and if I get reelected, I would, I would still go if, even though if it's a non-paid post, I guess. I would still attend quarterly liaisons meetings, even, even if they were unpaid.
Okay. Where's the rest of council?
Well, I think that there is, I think there is some value in, in being, being there at the table. So I would say that, yeah, in the case of Cold Lake, especially, if the counselor in that region is, sees the value of that, we're okay, I'm okay with it. Yeah. Like, doesn't hurt to be part of it, for sure.
Counselor Deshane?
I agree. It doesn't hurt to be a part of it or not be a part of it, because the Chamber of Commerce is, make their announcements and they're, they're all over media and they can report to us if there's, if they want to participate in something with us or they want us to participate with them. So either way, it's, it's fine with me being a member of that committee. But I think they do a fine job of getting out there and getting to us and being a part of it, getting us to be a part of their, their system. So I'm not worried either way. It's, it's up to the rest of council, whatever they think.
And, Mr. Reeve? Yeah, so this is, this is one committee really that you just attend. So you're, you're supporting by, by being in attendance. And there's really, it doesn't affect administration and it doesn't affect the, our budget very much. So I would be in favor in keeping them both in place.
Anyone else?
I'm good either way, I guess, hearing some of the comments here, whatever we decide.
Would we be good in going back to, in this case, the, the Bonneville Chamber and saying, you know, we'll have somebody available, but only quarterly?
Something like that would be, it's up to you, whatever you guys think.
And maybe making the suggestion that they handle things in a similar fashion as Cold Lake?
Yeah, we can attend the next meeting and, and suggest that and just say where we kind of want to go with that. To their thoughts are and they'll tell us what their thoughts are, for sure. I can bring that back.
Okay. So, yeah, for the time being, those would, those would stay in place, then. Unless there's any burning desire to, to squash them. Okay. Now into ones that weren't covered.
Yes, Mr. Reeve. So all the existing, all the ones that weren't covered are included and listed in Appendix B.
Yeah.
So the only two that we would be looking at adding back into here are the two chambers of commerce at this time. With the potential in the future for, with the direction of council to look into a potential intermunicipal committee as well.
Okay. Yeah?
I see the Bonneville Municipal Library and the Cold Lake Library as highlighted.
Yes. So those two are unique. So for years, and please, those with more history than I, feel free to jump in. We did not have a position on the board in the Coal Lake Public Library. So it was something that the Bonneville Library did include within the terms of reference of their library board, that we do have a council member on their board. Up until just a few years ago, the city of Coal Lake did not have that. However, now that we do not have our own MD library board, which we used to have, it was felt through council over the past few years to have equal representation in these two boards, given that we do provide them with financial support on an annual basis. As well with our relationship with the Northern Knights Library System, the regional board, where we are a member of that board, they, through our MOU with them, which we put in place a few years ago, they disseminate provincial grant funding normally allocated to the previous MD library board to these two libraries. Long story short, we provide funding either directly or indirectly to these two boards. So now we do have a position on these two boards.
So the question to those who are on those boards then, is there value in being there and is there, would it suffice that an annual report from the libraries? Would that be good enough for council? Or do you feel as though your input on a monthly basis is absolutely necessary?
Well, I don't, I mean, necessary, I don't know. But I think it's valued for sure. And, you know, they kind of give us an annual report when they come with their budget each year. But, I mean, I enjoy it and I think that I add value for sure to the Bonneville Library. So I'd like to see it continue.
Okay.
Value is a pretty tough question. You know, I mean, like you don't, like you don't really realize how much our residents use it until COVID hit. And now we're, our ratepayers are trying to homeschool their kids. And they have no internet. They have no high-speed internet. Where they used to always go to, you know, Coal Lake Public Library to use, that, those services were not there anymore because they're closed. And I mean, you know, when I sat there, you know, there was a need for, and council approved graciously the computers that they needed. And that was, that was awesome. You know, personally, I think on a quarterly basis would be, would be fine. But I'm okay with mirroring whatever Bonneville does.
Okay.
Well, I can say as well that Bonneville, like we didn't have any meetings in the summer either. So it really only equates nine, I think, meetings or whatever.
So it sounds like there's some value there. Okay? Okay, so it's good. Stace.
One additional point, Mr. Reeve. The reason why it's highlighted is because we are only allowed to make a recommendation to the two boards of who our representative would be. At the end of the day, they determine if it's accepted or not accepted, which is why it says recommendation only as per Libraries Act.
And you got accepted. How can that be? Yeah.
They have books with pictures, so it was all good.
Okay, does that cover everything? Are we...
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right. So coming out of this, we would be going with the motion to, yeah, with amendments, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there somebody who would like to made the motion to approve with the revisions, I guess it is? Counselor Padev.
I'll make the motion. The council approves, okay, yeah, number two. Council approves the Municipal District of Bonneville 2021-22 Committee Boards list with the stated revisions as directed October 28th, '21.
Mr. Reeve, may I ask for just an addition to say that the stated revisions to include the two chambers of commerce, because that is the one change associated with what was attached and presented? So just for further, for future reference, we'll know exactly what those revisions were instead of just looking at the agenda practice.
Sure, to include the two chambers. Okay, any discussion? Had lots already. Call a vote, please.
I'll just take a moment.
Sure.
She's just adding in the two committees into the motion.
So the 28th, why that date specifically? Is that our first day back as new council?
Through the Reeve, that date is actually the date of our first organizational meeting following the election. So that's when all the new appointments happen.
Okay, that motion was carried. We're now into council invitations.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. With a couple additions to the agenda, there are four invitations. So the first one is the Town of Bonneville Métis Flag Raising Ceremony and Barbecue on September the 2nd of 2021. The Town of Bonneville is requesting attendance with the Reeve and council to upcoming Métis Flag Raising Ceremony and Barbecue at the Town of Bonneville Administration of Office on Thursday, September 2nd at 11:00 a.m. To recognize our long and proud relationship with our indigenous neighbors, the event is open to the public. The second event is the 21st Annual Alberta Coordinated Action for Recycling Enterprise Care Conference, September 7th to 10th to 2021. And it's being held at the Bonneville and District Centennial Fieldhouse. The schedule is to follow. And then there's the cost of $4.75 per person. There is some activity taking place at Canussu at our ski hill. There's a dinner and some other event taking place out there as well. The 7.5.3 would have been the Northeast Munichor Annual Limited Annual Golf Tournament on Monday, August 16th, 2021 at the Smoky Lake Golf Club. It's nine holes of golf. Registration at 10:00 a.m., 10:30 a.m. is a shotgun start. Fee is $95 per person, including green fees, cart rental and lunch. I know we have at least one councillor that has indicated an interest in that. And there was a question asked added to the agenda on the Ronald McDonald Charities Golf Classic at the Coal Lake Golf and Country Club. That was originally scheduled for June 19th and was put off due to COVID. There is a new date now of August 21st, 2021 with a T-time of exactly 9:54 a.m. So, so that's, we've just confirmed that golf tournament as well. Now, that one in particular, council had already approved in April registering a team of four. So I believe there's already been registration paid for that golf tournament. It's just a matter of who is going to go and golf on behalf of the county at that time.
Just quick clarification. So Munichor, that's going to be in the town of Smoky Lake or the county? And I'm just wondering why they are allowed shotguns and we're not?
Yeah, it's at the Smoky Lake Golf Club. I'm assuming that that is in the county of Smoky Lake. And as to the second question, I'm unable to answer that question at this time. Bring your own, exactly.
As far as members of council that want to attend, I think there was Mr. Juvenville and Mr. Swiger and myself.
For Munichor.
For the Munichor Golf Course. I think the three of us were going to attend and bring the door prize.
Anybody else can go too.
Anybody else is, that wants to.
They wanted, they wanted to note by today, I think, was the 11th, yeah, RSVP by the 11th of August?
Yes.
So if anybody else wants to do that one. And then the Ronald McDonald one, I'm interested in that one, so. Mr. Juvenville was, or councillor Juvenville was also. I think the Reeve did that last year, the Ronald McDonald one.
I did Munichor last year. Did I?
Yeah, so many.
Neither one of them worked for me this year, so. Okay, so we just need a motion to approve the attendance for three to Munichor? Do we, or it was already approved for four, so?
Actually, Mr. Reeve, Munichor was not approved for attendance. It was only Ronald McDonald House who was approved.
Okay, so for Munichor, just a motion to approve one of those attending?
I'll make the motion to approve whoever wants to attend, which is...
Counselor Sheen, Counselor Swiger and Counselor Juvenville.
Okay, do they need to count for that rate? So, okay.
Register threesome?
And then, Mr. Reeve, I'll ask if, it'd be sure nice to have a representation for the Ronald McDonald one in Coal Lake. So just myself and councillor Juvenville so far. In the past, we've had admin ask and we've had another couple of people come. Like, we do the same this year if we can only find two councillors? 21st of August for Ronald McDonald.
So who's all going, Mr. Reeve, to Ronald McDonald?
Again, councillor Juvenville and councillor Swiger.
You have four already?
No.
If not, I'll be, I can be the fourth one for Ronald McDonald.
Well, that's the third, that's the third then, so we need...
Mr. CEO, do you have any suggestions or...
Are you going, you? You, me, are you, councillor Swiger? Are you going, Rees-Satchett?
No, I can't go.
Councillor Carson, you not going?
No, I think I want to get somebody in place. And that's CEO Al Hogan will go. We're about the same height, so we're good to go. People won't mistake us.
I have more hair. I would be, I'd be happy to tend to fill the fourth spot. Just don't expect magic with the golf club.
Okay, that's covered then. We need to vote on that other one, right?
Correct, it is coming up.
Okay. Okay, and we can call a vote there.
It's frozen. Mr. Reeve, it is frozen, however, the motion was carried.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Okay, we will carry on then into correspondence and information.
Mr. Reeve, we still are looking for approval from council to attend the Métis Flag Raising Ceremony and the Care Conference.
Okay. One motion to cover both or...
That would be, that would be fine for all of council to attend both, for sure.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
And we can call a vote there. Yeah, whoever can attend.
Mr. Reeve, escrib is frozen, so if I could have council vote by a show of hands?
Sure.
Thank you.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, now on to correspondence and information.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and members of council. Correspondence and information, minutes from the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority Board Meeting, Bolton for Alberta Open Farm Days, letter from the County Vermilion River to the Prime Minister concerning Bill C-21, letter from the Town of Bonneville, the Regional Economic Development Strategy, email from Lakeland Industry and Community Association, invitation to the Lica Garden Workshop, MD Notice of Fire Damage Update, the MD Donations Promotion Update and Council Action Report. And I would add on the Council Action Report, we have several interim and due to vacations, we have not updated that as we would like. So that will be, that will look much different at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Questions, councillor?
I have two questions. So first, what, so why would someone not get paid for the, like, not eligible for payment for the fire? What is the criteria for that?
I don't have the policy in front of me, but there is a detailed council policy on fire payment. I believe, well, I'll let, I'll let General Manager Yon speak to it because he's much more familiar than I am.
I'm not going to quote the policy verbatim, but we did look at it in the last few weeks because there has been some cases. So there has to be, in the fire, there has to be a loss of something to the house so they can live in there. We just had one in the Cherry Grove area where a partial part of the house did have some fire damage. The power was lost to the house because they lost the two car garage within the fire. So they did qualify for payment because of that. So the fire chief or the fire person makes that call on scene and then fills out the paperwork and then sends that to us. So then we can proceed with payments.
It's substantial damage to a primary residence.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not any outbuildings or property loss or anything like that. It has to be to the dwelling.
So the three, yeah, there's three that weren't eligible. So they're just, they weren't, there wasn't enough damage, you're saying?
That's right.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, there was only the one damage to the one house, so.
Councillor Swiger.
I'm just going to add, it could have been just an outbuilding, a garage or something, and it doesn't apply. So, yeah, I think it's $2,500 that we're doing now. And so it just helps with instant living expenses and motels or whatever you might need.
Yeah, works out really great because, you know, the home in Cherry Grove, you know, they have, they have four kids, mom and dad, and they had to leave because of stuff like that. So 25, just base for hotel rooms and, you know, maybe some grub.
Yeah, no, my neighbor had to do it and they were really happy with it, for sure. So I was just curious why they, some weren't eligible. So, and the second one was, it's to do with a motion on July 14th that we made as for proceeding with the tenders for the trails. And so I guess, you know, that's a month ago. Are we, have the tender been laid out? Or I know there's some word on the environmental approvals. So I guess, how does that, how does that change what the tenders look like and what are, what are we expecting for timelines there? Because I thought maybe we'd have those out by now.
Through the Reeve, councillor Carson, I'll let Director Clausen answer those questions. I think the general answer that I've received from Parks and Rec is we're not sending any tenders out until we have Alberta Environment Approval. If we send a tender before we have approval, there could be significant delays, which obviously would create other council-related questions where we have with this tender. So when we have approval, then we'll also know what that engineering is supposed to look like. And then the tender will go out based on the environmental approval. But I'll let Director Clausen speak to that.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. And yeah, just follow up with the CAO's comments. I believe that practice had occurred a few years ago and it ended quite poorly for the MD. And there was significant financial losses and stuff by putting something out prior to approvals. The approvals are with the provinces and so we've been hounding them almost daily on timelines and stuff.
So is the approvals required for each section of the project?
Through the Reeve, the approvals are needed for the environmental ones, so any wetlands. So any sections that cross wetlands, each one of those have to go through and be approved. And they're all separate. It's on a whole trail, but each one has to be looked at and reviewed separately by environment. And then the Alberta Transportation, that mostly revolves around, I guess, the Cherry Grove portion that goes along in the right of way there. So it's just getting approvals and the permits to put a trail in, very similar to what had occurred with the trail putting...
So each trail, like each trail portion has wetlands that you're dealing with? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, some more than others. Moose Lake one has quite a few that go through. Fort Kent goes through over kind of a creek or waterway there. And then there's... and then there's another wetland towards the end that it kind of crosses over. Cherry Grove, there's five or six, I believe.
So they, you have no, like, you don't have any kind of timeline on, like, is it this year even?
We're hoping this year, for sure, but it's with the province, and, and they, they won't give us a timeline on their end, so we're, we're kind of in a wait until then. But the tender is, is ready to go as soon as those, those approvals come. And if they don't require us to make any amendments, if they don't approve, say, a, where we want to put it through near a, a wetland in, in our mitigative actions for that, then that would require us to look at an alternate route through there, so. But until then, we don't know the full timelines, but we don't foresee that, that happening, but.
Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. On a broader basis, environment approvals, we have sitting in transportation right now approvals that are well over a year old that we're waiting for. It's been an ongoing issue with Alberta Environment and the municipalities regarding these approvals. I, I've been in multiple meetings with both the ministers and the deputy ministers regarding the approval timelines, and an environment is a bit schizophrenic when it comes to these, because you'll amazingly get an approval in two weeks on one thing, but on something very similar, it will take eighteen months. It really depends on whose desk it lands on. We've pushed the province through the Red Tape Reduction Act about environment, and environment is the one department that seems to have changed. Actually, I shouldn't say it's, it hasn't changed, it has changed. I think it's actually gotten worse in terms of our environmental approvals. And, and that's, one of the things that we did discuss was the possibility of doing the parts of the trails that don't require environmental approval. I'm always worried that if we did that, and then we did not receive approval, then we have these bits and pieces of trails where we look like we have a trail that, that ends, that ends in nowhere or starts in nowhere. So it, we're kind of stuck waiting for approval. So I, I, it's a frustration that we've had in, in operations for years, and it's just, we are currently, I know my executive assistant is currently trying to get meetings with, with council at RMA and privately with the Minister of Environment. I was in a meeting with the Minister of Environment two years ago, oh yeah, we're going to fix this. Minister Nixon said, yeah, yeah, I get this, and he brought in his staff, you got to take down these notes. But once it hits the bureaucracy at Environment, it just seems to die. We literally, and Brian could speak to it, but I think Conrad at our, at our operations meeting Tuesday morning said, said, how many months? We've got one that's, you know, waiting eleven months for approval. We can't tender it out, because we don't know what the engineering looks like until we have the approval. Then we know what we have to do to meet the approval documents, so we're, it, it's, it's unfortunate, but it is a bit of a, it is a bit of a tail chasing the dog situation.
Counselor Shane.
Yeah, I understand with that frustration, I'm waiting five years for an approval, so. We, maybe we should just shut all the projects down across the province, and they'll have to lay those people off. They can start fresh with some new people. They have no jobs to do. This is the way they're trying to run it.
That's a good point.
I do know that there are municipalities in the province who have taken a much, a fairly aggressive stance, particularly on the road projects, roads that have existed for fifty years in areas, and all the, all the municipality wants to do is go in and upgrade a road. And in some cases, I know some municipalities are, are taking it upon themselves to determine what the best course of action is, with or without a particular approval document from. So it, it's been mentioned ad nauseam to the minister, but we, there just doesn't seem to be any, any action below the Assistant Deputy Minister level. It still is exactly the same, and again, I would suggest that, I, I think it's actually gotten worse.
Okay. The Red Tape Reduction Minister actually said that seventy percent of the, the files on his desk have to do with Alberta Environment, so.
He's also no longer the Red Tape.
Yeah, yeah, he was fired the day after, so.
In regards to meeting with the minister on September twenty-ninth, October first, the Recycling Council of Alberta is having their meeting in Banff. There's going to be two ministers there, one of them is going to be the, the Environment Minister, and I'll be happy to hold his ankles while you talk to him. I know he's a big feller, but I think we can take him. That's, that's that. I'm just looking for some more information in regards to the right-of-ways and how the environment end of it works. So we're putting these trails in our right-of-way, and called the ditch, and there's a little bit of wetland, like, maybe two feet of it. Is that, like, I'm, I'm just, I'm totally confused to why we need any kind of okay to do that.
The regulations are pretty clear. For our purposes, if it has a cattail, it's probably a wetland, whether it's two feet or two hundred feet. It was much easier fifteen years ago, with, there was a wetland, you calculated the, the acreage, and you wrote a check to Ducks Unlimited at ten thousand dollars an acre, and you did whatever you wanted to do. Those days are gone, I don't even think we send the money to Ducks Unlimited anymore, I think we send it to the province, and then we wait for approval. Whether it's in our right-of-way or not, we are still bound, as is private industry, by the, the Environment Act and by the regulations that flow from the act. It's, if it's deemed as a wetland, we have a current issue right now with our shop facility, the land at the shop, not the shop itself, but just a little, I guess that would be the southwest corner of the quarter section. And we're, we're currently dealing with engineering and Alberta Environment approvals on our own land. So it, it's, if they, if it's deemed a wetland, then we have to have approval. It, it's, it's just simply, and if we don't, the fines are significant.
Yeah, it seems to be a real fine line, because, I mean, at what point can they say, well, you guys have, you guys are gravelling your roads too much, and that gravel is touching our cattail, and now you guys need a permit for that? Like, it's getting to be so silly.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. So when it comes to roads in particular, not new roads, but existing roads, we are very careful in, in that we are maintaining a structure as opposed to upgrading or enhancing a structure. So a lot depends on how we approach a particular project. If it's, if it's a maintenance of a currently existing structure, even though it might be on or close to a wetland, typically, we don't have any issues. It comes with the major upgrades. So if you wanted to take a road that's a current gravel road, for example, through a wetland, and turn it into an ACP road, we probably have an environment issue. If we want to just maintain that gravel road and do minor maintenance, a shoulder pull, spot gravelling, or just re-gravelling, we would be okay. But the moment you move beyond just the simple maintenance of that to an enhancement, to an upgrade, to a rebuild, you, you then walk into the environmental issues. So that's, so a new trail, for example, would be new, that would, that would create, if it's maintenance of an existing trail, we.
But, but things are different on hamlet jump.
Wetlands, whether you're in a hamlet, or whether you're in the country, whether you're in a ditch, the environmental regulations differentiate very little by location. And then, of course, it turns, then from there, you go, is it an environment issue, or has it become a Water Act issue? Water Act issues, we can actually get approvals on much more quickly typically than we can in environment issues, but, but the, the environmental regulations are, are irrespective of whether you're in a hamlet or whether you're, whether you're in a ditch. They are what they are. And sometimes they take up to five years.
Okay. Hey, anything else? So we just need a motion then to accept all of the correspondence. Deputy Reeve? Thank you. We can get all the vote, are we working or not? Oh, it's working, okay. Yeah. And that is carried, thank you. Reports. Deputy Reeve?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I had no committee meetings, there's no lodge meeting in July, cancelled, so I just went to the Chuck Wagon, Chuck Wagon Calhalla, and to the Chili Cookoff. I had nineteen bowls of chili, but I had to be careful, the last few bowls, I didn't take very much. I was okay after that, and it was a lot of fun, so thank you for asking me to go there.
Yeah, so just a couple of meetings that I attended, the Alberta Care Meeting at NISCU, and it was just an AGM, so just going over the, the, the new members, which I think are probably pretty well all the same members, so that's the Tom Morrison, the president, there's no, no changes in the board. They're certainly all excited about coming out to Bonneville in early part of September. And it'd be nice to, yeah, to be able to showcase our, our municipality, and to be able to get together and have some fun, because we're all pretty tired of the virtual stuff. The Ag Service Board Provincial Committee, we had a meeting yesterday, as a matter of fact, and we did have the Minister of Environment come in, take part of that meeting for about forty-five minutes, and talk about some of these public land issues. People are a little excited about, they're going to make some public lands available for pasture in some area, in some areas, but I'm thinking that by the time that it goes through public lands and environment, that they probably won't be needed. Is, that was some of the, some of the conversation there, because one of the members from the Woodland County said that they have been dealing with leases that are, that have been idle for fifteen years, and trying to deal with that department to, you know, to have some new fences put in, and basically, people that are not using them and putting any animals out there, that they should be losing those leases, and just nothing gets done. So we'll see what happens with, with that, with that announcement. Regarding, regarding municipalities declaring agricultural disaster, I think there's twenty-four, twenty-five now that have declared agricultural disaster. Interesting thing is, is that one of the members of the committee, again, from the Woodland County, said that they're, due to the rainfall that they've had, which was all, pretty well all took place in May, that AF, AFSC, there's probably no payment on, on hay insurance, because the rainfall in that period is, is comparable to what generally happens in, in that season. But there was no rain from June fifth to July twentieth, you know, so, and, and the hay crops are like, you know, thirty to, thirty to fifty percent of, of normal. So anyway, and, but I guess there was an announcement, I think, yesterday or a couple of days ago, that there will be some two hundred dollars a head per cow, per producing cow, I think that's going to be paid, and I'm not sure if that's going to be in the areas that there is, that there's actually declared disaster. I'm not sure, Matt, you probably have more information about that. But that's going to be interesting, and that's probably, do one thing for sure, it's really going to spike the hay, the hay prices, so. Yeah. Anyway, I think that's, that's all I have. Oh, I guess another thing, too, is I've had some, some comments regarding the contribution to the money that we made to the golf course. There's, there's a lot of positive comments there, and also with the relocation of Chapel that has set up, I don't know if you have seen that, but it's really nicely set up already at the, at the museum, and, yeah, it's looking good, so. Good projects that are happening, and are very, very good for the area.
Counselor Skarsen?
Yeah, mine's easy as well, I didn't have any committees the last two weeks, or the weeks before that, so. Easy.
David?
Yesterday, we had the Waste Reduction Committee, and that was a great committee, great committee. So basically, we, we're, we have twenty, we have twenty cameras set up around all the sites, around, around the MD to monitor illegal dumping that might, that might be happening. We crushed all our, our concrete, and we had about twelve hundred cubes of concrete. Surprising enough, out of that twelve hundred, we had, we took about forty percent of clay out of that, so. I don't know how that works, but it's, it's magical. So we had about forty-one hundred tons, so, so there was some good value there for the MD of Bonneville, and we were so gracious enough to give it to TNU. Wow. It's all the same pocket, I guess, it's all good. Toxic Roundup is going to happen September twenty-fifth here at the, at Station Five. We talked about the Alberta Care Fall Conference, and, yeah, that's about it. August twenty-seventh would be the car show at the, at the, at the MD of Bonneville Airport, and I'm looking to get all of council to help flip burgers for an appreciation for the volunteers and the, and the entry guys there, so. I know Counselor Skarsen's going to be there, Counselor Juvenville.
When is this happening?
Twenty-seventh, Friday, from five o'clock to about seven. Flip burgers, you're good at that, I won't, I won't call you any other names.
Yeah, I was planning on being here.
Okay.
It's a car show, right?
It is, yeah, yeah. Twenty-seventh of. You sure can, you sure can. Twenty-seven from five to seven. No, at the Bonneville Airport, at the MD of Bonneville Airport. Okay, thank you. Counselor Shane? Thank you, twenty-seventh. Okay, so, awesome. There's going to be the same thing with the Town of Bonneville, so there's going to be a, a flip-off contest, I mean, flipping burgers contest.
Okay, Counselor Shane?
Yes, the only meeting I attended was a committee meeting for Waste Reduction, recycle.
Really good meeting.
Yes. And it was, it's an awesome committee, so lots of information come in, Mr. Counsel for Dave mentioned. He did not mention some of the great things that TNU and, I guess, Ag Department did. They did some ditch mowing for the province, again, and personally, I'm not for that, but it worked out really well, and I appreciate the good work they did, because it's good for our residents and creates good feelings and safety for everybody. Other than that, that's all I have. I'll, I do have a, a question for Brian. I just was wondering if he could send a staff member to, or discuss with the washrooms at the water stations, Fort Kent and Ardmore. I looked at the one at the Ardmore station when I got a load of water, and it was pretty disgusting, so. Just wondering if we could have a look at them, are they rental, are they ours, I'm not sure. Porta potty, yes, yeah, it's not worth opening that door. But, yeah, and then I'd like to know if we're going to have a industry committee meeting pretty soon again, because what's going on in my ward there with the trucks, taking shortcuts, abusing our road agreements that we've got with them, and to upgrade some of our dust controls that the former energy company had put in place, and that it's gone, gone by the wayside, and I think the TNU Department are going to bring that forward.
We can put in a request to, to do another industry meeting with the particular player at your.
Yeah, okay, if we could do that, I, I think Brian has some of the information that I've been forwarding to him, and requests to his foremans and him, but to just see what, what we had in place before with the other company, I, I think that's, there's a problem there. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I attended a Meet the Drivers event in, at the Bonneville Rodeo Grounds on the fourth of August, and Councilor Kriviek and Councilor Juvenville were there, and Councilor Juvenville did a great job as the auctioneer, auctioning off whatever you're auctioning, I'm not into the. It was chuck wagons, but it was a good event, Town of Bonneville had councillors there, and we had three there, so it was nice. And that's it.
Okay. And I was gone the majority of the last two weeks, and I thank the Deputy Reeve for taking on the chili contest for me, because I, I know that is a, an arduous task. Yes, yeah.
And you made them eat all the chili, instead of just.
Yeah, yeah, you do have to pace yourself with that one, so. Okay, with that, that completes the, the regular session.
A couple of things that I'd like to bring up. There's two, there's two golf tournaments that I'm, that I'm surprised that are not, that we haven't had any invitations for. One is the Chamber of Commerce, I think that's happening on the fourteenth, and one is the Junior Ray Fundraising Golf Tournament, is happening on the twenty-first, I'm thinking, so I'm not sure if, if these organizations should be contacted, and if there's anything that I would be in support of, even our rec department, putting staff members in the Junior Ray, or someone from the C-two couple of, so. Just wondering if that's something we could explore.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, absolutely, I'm not familiar, and Ms. Campbell's shaking her head at me, so we have no knowledge of them, but we can certainly look into them, and once we get some information, and if we probably get that fairly quickly, we could certainly send an email out to council, saying, is there any councillors who want to golf? And then if we can't, we can certainly fill it with, with staff positions, either, either one or both.
Or even just prizes or support in some.
Absolutely.
Okay. Motion to, actually, we'll do a motion to go to closed session, we'll also take a recess. Deputy Reeve, thank you, and we can call the vote. Yeah. Now it's carried, I think. Okay, thank you. Okay, we are back from closed session, and the, the motion out of closed session was by Councilor DeShane. And then coming out of closed session in regards to the campground planning, there is no motion there. In regards to the council code of conduct, it was a discussion about code of conduct, and, and then really just a rehashing here that we recognize that it's something we have to abide by. With that, we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve.
Okay, Councilor Juvenville, and all in favor?
Aye.
It's carried, thank you, have a great day.